Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 23, 2019, meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call?
Councilmember Agujianian?
Present.
Divine?
Here.
Carpetian?
Here.
Quintero?
Here.
Mayor Najarian?
Here.
Councilmember Carpetian, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
My honor, please join me in saluting the red flag of our nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for today's invocation by Reverend Kirk Poland, First German-United Methodist Church of Glendale. Mayor and councilmembers, I think he wasn't able to make it, so I will go ahead and do the invocation myself. Let us join in a prayer for our city as we ask for guidance and wisdom for tonight's meeting. We pray for safe neighborhoods and prosperity and ask that we work together to make Glendale a wonderful place for everyone who lives and works here. We ask that you look after all those who serve in our military and pray that they return home safe. We ask all of this in your name. Amen.
Mr. Clerk, may we have your report?
The agenda for the July 23, 2019, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, July 18, 2019, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And what is the next item?
Three would be presentation and appointments. 3A, agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, July 30, 2019.
Mr. Galanian?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. For July 30, 2019, there are no items on the Housing Authority Agenda. However, there will be a special meeting of the City Council commencing at 3:00 PM. And there are two items on the agenda from Director of Community Development. First one regarding Glendale Burbank Regional Streetcar Feasibility Study, followed by revisions to the Municipal Code Noise Control Ordinance relating to the use of amplified sound equipment. That evening, for City Council meeting commencing at 6:00 PM, there are a number of consent items. First two from Director of Public Works regarding Glendale Beeline Maintenance Facility Project Professional Support Services. And secondly, Subregional Traffic Management Center Relocation Project, followed by three items from Director of Community Services and Parks. First one regarding acceptance of English Language Learner Pilot Grant from the Ver- to the Vertigo Workforce Development Board, followed by acceptance of Measure H funds and the amount of $100,000 for the Regional Immediate Intervention Service to Employment. And thirdly, acceptance of Disability Employment Accelerated Grant to provide employment services for people with disabilities. Followed by two items from General Manager of Glendale Water and Power. Request for Proposals for the Design and Build of the Pipeline Management Program, followed by Professional Services Agreement with VCI Utility Services to provide GWP with design services for fiber optic network expansion. On the action items, there are three items. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding Authorization for Repair and Part Supply Contract for Unit 9 at the Grayson Power Plant, followed by Director of Public Works regarding San Fernando Road Rehabilitation Phase 3 and Adjacent Street Improvements Project. And lastly, Director of Public Works regarding Amending the Glendale Municipal Code relating to Construction and Demolition Debris, Yard Trimmings, and Recyclable Material Collection and Disposal. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Divine?
Thank you. I would like to nominate tonight for the Community Services and Parks Commission Kate Eberle. Thank you.
And what is the next item, please?
Consent item. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of Council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
Okay. Would someone like to move the consent calendar?
I'll move the consent item. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agujianian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Next item would be City Council and Staff Comments.
Let me start to my left. Mr. Carpetian?
Mr. Mayor, I have so many comments to make, but on the interest of time and everyone waiting out there tonight, I have nothing to say.
You really went up in my view. I want you to know that.
Thank you. Thank you. That's what I was looking for.
Mr. Quintero?
Ditto.
Mr. Carp- Mr. Agujianian? Ms. Divine?
Sorry, I guess I'm going down. I have two announcement- or one announcement. You know, I don't know how many people are aware of the Antaeus Theater here in Glendale, but they have the most marvelous productions. It's theater on Broadway. They are now- the production now is the Caucasian Chalk Circle. It is amazing. It's $35 a ticket. Very small theater, intimate, but every one of their productions is noteworthy. So I'm just mentioning that because it's here, it's in our entertainment and arts district, and it's fabulous, and you should all experience it. My second is a request from our City Manager, and there's some concern in the community, and especially in the Montrose Shopping Park Association about SB 946, and that's the vending Senate Bill, which is kind of like a free-for-all for vendors. And I'm wondering if I think we need to get out in front of this and develop draft and ordinance so that we can regulate the sale of oranges and food on our street corners so that we preserve the health and safety of our- our community.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Councilmember Divine, staff is already looking at SB 946, and we will be evaluating and looking at options to see what we can bring to the City Council. We have been in touch with the Montrose Shopping Park Association as well as the DGA in terms of street vendors, and the conversation continues.
Good. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the next item, please.
Next item would be community event announcements, three-minute portion.
I do have a card from Michael Morgan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Welcome back. Frank Quintero, City Ma- Madam City Manager, staff, and Glendale residents. My name is Michael Morgan, and I am President of the Historical Society of the Crescent Valley. I would like to invite everyone this Saturday, July 27, at 8:00 PM. The Historical Society of Crescent Valley is having our annual silent movies at Two Strike Park. 5104 Rosemont Avenue, La Crescent. Local celebrity Joe Rinoode, with his 110-year-old hand-crank projector, will be showing some of his favorite comedic silent movies under the stars. If you don't know Joe Rinoode, spelled R-I-N-A-U-D-O, look him up under YouTube with his American Photo Player. It's kind of a player piano on steroids. After watching one of his videos, you will have the same feeling attending this program Saturday night. Humor is universal. Accompanying will be Cliff Redelick on piano. Silent films were never silent. These two do all the silent programs for the American Motion Picture Academy. That's where the Academy Awards are. Bring a blanket, or lawn chair, picnic or snacks, and a flashlight to help light your way out when the program is over. Step back 100 years in time when traveling projectionists brought movies to towns too small to have theaters. Again, this program is under the summer stars and is free, and brought to you by the Historical Society of the Crescent Valley and L.A. County Parks. This Saturday, July 27, 8:00 PM, 5107 Rosemont at Two Strike Park. And as the Beatles said, "A good time will be had by all." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Lanzafame? Did he just leave? I'm taking you a little bit out of order. I should have done you during the last segment, but the mic is yours.
Mr. Mayor, I stand before you a little embarrassed now. We- you did a lot of great work and adopted some standards and policies in the downtown specific plan area to enhance and implement your vision of the downtown. The work really was unique and created some new concepts. The American Planning Association saw fit to recognize you for that, and we wanted to present you with a plaque. My plaque bearers have left. We will do this another night.
Okay. Thank you.
That's completely on me, Mr. Mayor. Having just come back, I told Mr. Lanzafame, because it's such a packed evening, we would do another evening. So my apologies.
We wouldn't want to receive awards in front of a large audience. We're too modest for that, this group.
Some would say it's PR.
The next group of speakers I have are for the three-minute general public comments. First is Ash Rosas.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. Thank you for your time today. Because I have to leave earlier than most of these folks, I'm going to speak at this time about the current pressing topic, Agenda Item 8A.
So we have a- we have a procedural rule-
Yep.
-that says that if you're going to speak on an agenda item, that you cannot make those comments during a general public comment period.
Okay.
Especially since I'm not going to be giving everyone else a three-minute time period.
I can go through this-
I'm going to modify this and give you a one minute.
Do I start after?
You'll start. We'll reset the clock for you.
Thank you. I'm going to go by this really fast. So, as we all know, the current- the concern about the climate crisis has presented itself as an issue right here in Glendale. The IPCC provided an objective report that states that we have a limited amount of time to make the crucial shift from natural gas to renewable energy. The expansion of the Grayson Power Plant is a step backwards rather than a step into the future. The repowering of the Grayson Power Plant would likely make Glendale the last city in California to approve a gas power plant. My future depends on many conversations just like this one here and around the world. The shift of energy sources will happen because of state mandate, and we don't want Glendale residents and Glendale workers to be left behind. The Grayson Power Plant doesn't just represent a local energy source. It represents melted glaciers, polluted air, dying species, and much more. All we ask of you is to research all possible options before you move forward with any new fossil fuels. Because of the tremendous technological developments, I can guarantee you that you will find sustainable energy options. Our generation will continue to fight for the improvement of the future, and honestly, I'm not just fighting for the future, but I'm fighting for my six-year-old sister. She's amazed by the solar system, particularly the stars, and at what point in my life do I have to explain to her that the reason she no longer can look at them is due to air pollution? Because our leaders made the choice to overlook these issues. So please make sure you keep in mind the younger generations that suffer, will suffer the consequences, and live on after you all. Thank you.
I hope everyone got that out of their system, because I am not going to permit any applause from any side on any topic during this meeting. If you do so, I'm going to remind you maybe once. Maybe the second time may result in us asking you to leave the room. This isn't a sporting event. We're here to take information from the public and hear from our consultants, and we can best focus on those remarks if we don't have applause after the speakers. The next person submitting a card is Madeline Frey. Pass. Okay. Kat Pilarde.
Hi.
Hi there.
You might have to give me only a minute as well. Is that okay?
Yes, that's okay.
All right. Cool. I'm going to speak to L.A. as a whole, even though I know we're in Glendale. But, you know, we're also Dodgers fans, some of us, so I think we're, right? We're part of L.A. Okay. So for 19 of the last 20 years, L.A. has beat out every other American city for something. We beat Chicago, we beat Boston, we beat Miami, Houston, New York City. We beat New York City at being the smoggiest city in the U.S. According to the American Lung Association last year, L.A. averaged 111 days per year when the air was not healthy to breathe. So that's about like every Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and sometimes Friday. You wake up, you brush your teeth, you drive to work, and then you breathe poison. Air. Okay. But I'm here because I think we have an opportunity right now for change and for growth and to be leaders in the movement toward a sustainable, carbon-neutral world. I don't want us to be the winners of the pollution game, you know? I want us to be the winners of the sustainable game and renewable energy. I think this is the future, and I think this is where money is, and I think this is where opportunity is. And I think we can save ourselves money in the long run if we invest now in renewable energy. Cool. Thank you.
I don't have any other speaker cards for this portion of public comment. Let's move to the next item, please.
The eight action items. 8A, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding 2019 Integrated Resource Planning Report. Update regarding Glendale Water and Power, GWP, requests for proposals for local and regional renewable low-carbon and zero-carbon resource options to serve the city of Glendale Clean Energy, RFP. 8A, 1, Resolution Adopting Glendale Water and Power 2019 Integrated Resource Plan, IRP. 2, Resolution Authorizing GWP's Continued Participation in Intermountain Power and Project and Finding That Such Action Is Exempt From the California Environmental Quality Act. 3, Resolution Dispensing With Competitive Bidding For the Clean Energy, RFP, and Clean Energy Proposals and Authorizing the General Manager of Glendale Water and Power to Pursue Further Negotiations of Potential Distributed Energy Resources Contracts with the Following Firm. 1, Franklin Energy; 2, Lime Energy Services Co- Company; 3, Perma-City Construction Corp; and 4, Sunrun Incorporated. 4, Resolution Authorizing the General Manager of GWP to Utilize the Alternative Project Delivery Method for the Engineer Procurement and Construction of the Battery Energy Storage System, B-E-S-S, and Internal Combustion Engines, ICE, at Grayson Power Plant and the Long-Term Performance and Service Agreement for the Besse and ISIS. 5, Motion Awarding Professional Service Agreement, PSA, to Tesla Incorporated for a Limited Notice to Proceed with Professional Services related to Permitting Design and Environmental Review of the Proposed Development of a Battery Energy Storage System at the Grayson Power Plant in the- in an Amount Not to Exceed $114,000 and Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Said Agreement. 6, Motion Awarding PSA to Wardsila North America Incorporated for a Limited Notice to Proceed with Professional Services relating to Permitting Design and Environmental Review of the Proposed Development of a Four Internal Combustion Engines at the Grayson Power Plant in the Amount Not to Exceed $955,100 and Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Said Agreement. 7, Motion Authorizing an Amendment to PSA Number 8000053 with Stantik Consulting Services Incorporated to Increase the Contract Amount by $240,000 plus a 10% contingency for Professional Consulting Services under the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pertaining to the Proposed Modernization of the Grayson Power Plant. 8, Resolution Declaring the Intention to Reimburse Certain Expenditures from the Proceeds of a Proposed Tax-Exempt Financing for the Proposed Modernization of Grayson Power Plant. And 9, Resolution Appropriating $1,921,100.
Okay. Thank you very much. Before we get started, I just want to give everyone a roadmap as to where we're going to go this evening procedurally. We will shortly be turning this over to GWP staff and any other consultants that are going to be making the primary presentation to us. I will then be going to council for questions only on the presentation. We won't be making arguments or making any discussion. I will then go to the public and call the public up. Those who have submitted cards will be given a chance to speak. I still have not determined how many minutes each person is going to be allotted. I do want to keep this discussion and interaction fresh. I don't want to have either babies falling asleep or council members falling asleep through a extended discussion period. I'm then going to go back to council for their discussion, analysis, and positions on the item. So those of you who have not yet turned in a speaker card, now is the time to do so. Those in the police community overflow room, those downstairs, and those in the audience here in chambers who wish to speak but who have not yet turned in a card, please do so. At some point, perhaps in the next 10 or 15 minutes, I'm going to instruct the clerk not to accept any more cards. So you've got a little bit of a warning in advance, and that's so I can determine how long we're going to give each person to speak and then move forward with this item. So I believe we have assistants both in the police community room downstairs and obviously in chambers to assist you with the transmitting your card. That being said, I will turn to our City Manager, Yasmin Beers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you and good evening. As you know, we were before the City Council in April of 2018 with an EIR for a natural gas power generation repowering project and a battery option to replace the aging generators at Grayson. City Council at the time quite aptly directed the staff, us, to go back and find cleaner alternatives. That was very clear from the City Council in April of 2018 for us to go and seek cleaner alternatives. We took a pause, and we've taken a pause, and that's what we have done. We are now here before you to present the results of the Clean Energy RFP and the 2019 Integrated Resource Planning Report, which is a planning document, a roadmap, if you will, as it relates to the IRP itself for the next five years. Again, because of your direction, we can be both reliable, and we can be green here in the city of Glendale. A repowered Grayson is an integral part of Glendale's plan to move to 100% clean energy future. And there is no practical way for us to skip forward to deal with this gap that we have in place without some sort of a project. We are moving ever so slowly in this very important decision that you all have to make. And tonight is only one step in that process. I repeat, tonight is one step in that process, and I think that's really important in that decision-making process. It's that first step. There will be multiple more opportunities where we will be before the City Council for you to continue to give us feedback and to give us direction in terms of what you are looking for for Glendale's future energy needs. At this time, I will keep it short because we do have a long presentation. I'd like to pass this on to our General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, Mr. Zern, who will be, I think, giving a brief overview and inviting Dr. Gary Doris to also come up to do his presentation with that. Steve?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and thank you, Ms. Beers. I think that Ms. Beers kicked this off aptly. Here we are. We're back. And we are back with what we think, and to just echo the words of Ms. Beers, a much better plan as a result of your foresight in having us look into this a little bit further. And without further ado, because I'm going to- And without further ado, because I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Doris, who is the, is the founder, co-founder and CEO of Ascend Analytics, who assisted us both in the IRP process and the Clean Energy Review process in, in, from the analytical and modeling standpoint. So I'm going to ask him to come up, he has quite a detailed presentation, and that's going to be followed up, I'm going to make some summary comments and go over a couple of, of important items, and then we're going to turn it over to Ms. Kednas, who's going to try to go through that long list that was read to you at the beginning and decipher it or put it into words that make it a little bit more understandable of exactly what we're asking you to do. And at the same time during my summary comments, I would be happy to go over what next steps are. As Ms. Beers said, there are several future steps that we're going to need to, to consider before we finalize this project, and I'll be happy to go through those with you and give you an idea of what those are and some general timelines and when we expect to be back. So with that, Dr. Doris.
It's a pleasure to be back here again, this time with some real results, and looking forward to sharing them with you. So we're going to go over the activities of the last, let's say, year, where we've been actively pursuing and analyzing new resource options for the city of Glendale with respect to repowering the Grayson Station. Without further ado, I'm going to move through these slides. First, a little bit of historical context, and my presentation will go on for about twenty-five minutes, I expect. Feel free to interrupt at any point with questions, that'd be fine. So how did we get here? Well, March two thousand eighteen, there was an original repowering plan of two hundred and sixty-two megawatts of natural gas from Siemens to repower the Grayson Station. With some wisdom, this council, as was referred to by Mr. Zern, said, let's take a pause and let's look at what's happened in the last several years and maybe take advantage of some new technologies and resource options. That proved to be quite prudent, because we're here today, having gone through the steps of an RFP, solicited responses, evaluated those responses very carefully, developed and finalized an Integrated Resource Plan, or IRP, and are at the point now where we have some critical decisions to make, because we can, it looks like, make significant inroads in addressing climate issues, the environment, and be very cost-effective as well. I think this is a wonderful plan, it makes a big, bold statement in terms of addressing critical issues that concern everybody here. Glendale starts from a leadership position with respect to environmental stewardship. It's a good place to be, particularly when you're making a bold move forward. With respect to the regional electricity mix, recent article in the LA Times on this past Sunday has Glendale lenient peer group in the LA basin here. You're the cleanest in terms of carbon emissions. That's a good thing, something to stand proud of. This is something this plan will carry forward and continue to have the strong leadership that you've exhibited in the past. When we undertake a power plan, it's something that economists like me get into in terms of both reliability, keeping the lights on, focusing on some of the values, clean and reliable, making sure that we interact and integrate some of the community. We've done this with multiple meetings with the community and soliciting their participation, and involved Rocky Mountain Institute as well as experts to solicit community participation. We've analyzed things carefully all along the way and tried to achieve the highest level of standards in terms of integrating all the available information that's out there today to arrive at what we've come to for the resource plan. And this is not done with an absence of looking at costs. Obviously, today you're facing some critical decisions about how to allocate public capital towards the decision to improve the underlying reliability of the grid here, as well as make a, a statement about improving the environment. And we want to do this in mind, that there are people who do have budget limits, and we can't just spend, as money grows on trees, but maybe that would solve climate change. All right. The recommended resources for the Grayson replacement, we're looking at solar, local, some Tesla batteries, solar from Sunrun, I should say, some energy efficiency as well and demand response, and finally, a ninety-three megawatts of backup generation from some Wartzila engines that will burn natural gas today, and I envision in the future some renewable fuel. How did we get here, other than the fact that you directed us to reevaluate? And what are we looking at? Well, we're looking at a situation where the city of Glendale relies on a little bit of local, or a fair bit of local generation in contingency conditions, but generally the supply of energy comes externally to the city. There's one hundred megawatts of interconnection with Pacific Inner Tie, another one hundred megawatts from the Southwest AC Inner Tie. Locally, we have about two hundred and ten megawatts of replacement portfolio for the Grayson stations one through eight that we're looking at, and we have Grayson nine, which we plan on keeping, as well as Magnolia just down the road in Burbank. Each tallying in forty-eight megawatts, the Grayson Magnolia plants. City load, its peak load has been three hundred forty-four megawatts. Thank you for attending to that. What we're dealing with in terms of a decision is how do we shore up the supplyability when the Grayson one-through-eight units are retired? We need dependable local generation, and the reason Glendale needs dependable local generation is simple. You're dependent on external supply, and that could be renewable energy coming from the east over the inner ties. If the Pacific tie goes down or the Southwest tie goes down, the city, when it's in peak load, is in a tough spot, and you need some backup generation. In addition, the Magnolia Power Plant has shown a, a great aptitude to have outages during extreme peaks. That makes the system a little more precarious. So is Grayson. So with high unforced outages on Magnolia and Grayson, and the fact that there are and have been curtailments of the transmission inner ties, be it the pack tie or the Southwest tie due to fire, leads to what we're calling reliability requirement N minus one, minus one. You can't lose the Pacific Inner Tie, which is the most often frequent line to go out, or Magnolia, or Grayson, and keep the lights on without some significant firming of the local power supply. That's why we're replacing Grayson one-through-eight. I think it's pretty understood, and the math adds up, and we need to do something. The question is, what do we do? Well, went through this process. We know how much we wanted to obtain in terms of firm power supply, that's easy, that's a math calculation. Then this comes through sorting through, what's the best resource mix? Oh, we received thirty-four vendor solicitations, and we want to take the best of those, so we went through some screening process, there's some feasibility analysis. We scored all the proposals, and attributes of everybody who could provide, and did vendor interviews, with a final shortlist. And today, we're going to be looking at what are the results and the relative options that we decided not to pursue. So here are the alternatives summarized that reached that feasible shortlist, okay? And how could they be combined in different portfolios in ways that would achieve the reliability concerns? And then what's the economic and environmental impact? What we found was, the existing portfolio obviously needed to be repowered, and doing that with natural gas is Portfolio B, it's kind of the Siemens-type plan, that was about a hundred and thirty million dollars more than what was picked, and it was dirtier. So that's easy to move on from. Then we have Portfolio C, which is a repowering, just with imported renewable resources, plus some storage, and a hundred forty-nine megawatts of ICEs. Then we have Portfolio D, which adds in some additional clean and local distributed resources, as well as maintaining the solar and wind, plus a hundred and twelve megawatts of ICE. And Portfolio E, which is the chosen portfolio, is ninety-three megawatts of ICEs, or five ICEs, internal combustion engines or ICEs, plus the balance of the distributed resources, the renewable wind and solar, and seventy-five megawatts of batteries. So if you begin following this, it's real simple, we're going from D to F, all have internal combustion, or C to F, all have internal combustion engines and batteries. F racks its down from five to three internal combustion engines, but increases the batteries by twenty-five megawatts, and only has, again, three ICEs, or fifty-six megawatts. Portfolio G is a hundred percent clean.
Dr. Doris?
Okay, finish the G and then I'll ask.
Is, is a hundred percent clean and has no internal combustion engines, but it has a hundred fifty megawatts of batteries, and was put up there as a point of comparison. It doesn't meet the reliability standards by, by any means. In fact, if I was to quantify the forced outages in dollar value, net present value over twenty years, it'd be two thousand two hundred twenty-one million dollars to Glendale in outages at ten thousand dollars a megawatt hour. So Portfolio G is woefully short, may be green, but doesn't meet reliability. Portfolio F, as we'll talk about in a minute, is inadequate from reliability perspective as well. It has two hundred and twenty-one million dollars in outages. Portfolio E and D and C do meet, and B, all meet the reliability criteria, but Portfolio E, although it may not be the least cost, as you'll see in a minute, furthers the objective of making a bold move towards the environment.
I just want to ask you to compare E and F one more time, if it's possible.
Sure, and we'll be going over this again in detail, just where we look at E, F, and G. So it's real simple, the real difference between E and F is there's seventy-five megawatts of batteries in E and a hundred megawatts of batteries in F, and I have five ICEs in E and three in F. F is less reliable and costs more. In fact, it's infeasible under NERC standards for reliability.
And when you say costs more, what we are talking about, how much money we're...
Oh, it's not, just a second, if you don't mind. We'll go over this decision, because I'm really trying to frame this problem in the economic construct, where you have all the information you can to make the right decision. And I'm trying to make this as easy as possible, given the complexity of the problem, because I know the objectives, keep the lights on, and make a big, bold statement about the environment, and show your leadership there. And I think we have a framework where you'll have all the data you need to make a good So I've presented here the net present value of costs between the different portfolios, and this goes from least cost to highest cost. The highest cost is in the right, that's the natural gas repower, kind of the old Siemens plan that you directed us away from. So that's at, actually slightly updated Siemens plan, at seven hundred and four million. The selected portfolio is second in terms of cost, at five hundred and seventy million, that's Portfolio E. Obviously, just going with Portfolio C would be the least cost, and it satisfies the reliability as well. We thought it was consistent with the city's objectives, keeping the lights on, meeting the reliability requirements, as Portfolio C does, making a little bit more bold statement about the environment, spending extra, you know, close to ninety million dollars extra to go with Portfolio E. So this is a real commitment by the city to make, excuse me, it's not ninety million, it's eighty-two million dollars more, to go with Portfolio C, with the five ICE, internal combustion engines, and seventy-five megawatts of batteries. There are major reductions from adopting this plan. If we look at where we were just a little over a year ago, we were at the Siemens repower. This had emissions in terms of metric tons, thousands of metric tons of carbon. We're today at three twenty-nine, we're going to go down to two eighty. This is a lot of credit. Not only have you lowered emissions forty percent after the Clean RFP, but you've also reduced costs by about twenty percent. That's a real move in the right direction, both costs and for the environment. So this is, this is the way to go, with this repower, we believe, because we believe, I mean collectively, my company and our expertise, in conjunction with discussion of the utility, is Portfolio E. It is the preferred plan on every metric you can think of, and I'm going to show you that. First, let's talk about air quality. We retire Grayson's one-through-eight, significant reductions in air quality. SO2 is roughly flat, but the orange line in NOx, which is precursor to tropospheric ozone or urban smog, that drops from twenty-five to about ten. Significant reductions, you know, over fifty percent reduction in NOx emissions locally. Clearly, repowering is going to be valuable for improving air quality. More excitingly, I think, is what Glendale does in terms of a statement with this plan about improving CO2 emissions. In one decade, you're looking at a city that's going to have a net emissions reductions that goes negative when we factor into the transportation sector. What's happening in this chart is simple. If you look at the yellow, that's IPP, it's a coal plant, it retires in two thousand twenty-five, and the portfolio becomes a little cleaner after that. Furthermore, in twenty, that year, two thousand twenty-six, with the repowering and the additional renewables, we end up in the continuous action towards electric vehicles, integrating the transportation sector into effectively the power sector, making it cleaner. We realize the two thousand thirty goals in two thousand twenty-six, not just the, the upper bar, we realize the lower bar. That's wonderful. GWP exceeds what CARB has stated in roughly half the time for its goals for carbon reduction, and, and does so profoundly by the, by the time two thousand thirty is around, you're negative in terms of net carbon emissions, if we factor in the transportation sector, which is the way to look at this problem. The problem's become more complex, because now we have trade-offs that we never had before. It was always the power sector on its own. Now we're looking at a more integrated set of emissions in a global objective of reducing carbon. So we need to begin factoring in, how can our decisions today and the power be traded off with decisions in the transportation sector? How can your investments in power impact the transportation sector, and maybe programs in the transportation sector impact power? And that's what we're seeing here, is there's an, they're inextricably linked, and the net is what we're after, that's how CARB, California Resource Board sets it up, and we need to look at the power sector and the transportation sector, that's both under your dominion and deserve your attention in terms of improvements in CO2 reductions. I wanted to get to this detailed comparison. The slide, I understand, is slightly wonky by my colleagues, but I like it, because it frames the problem in the economic context for the decisions that you're facing. You understand that we've recommended Portfolio E. I know that you're looking closely at Portfolio F and G. E, again, is seventy-five megawatts of batteries, five ICEs. F is one hundred megawatts of batteries, three ICEs, and G is a hundred percent clean. If I take the nameplate capacities, they're shown up top of the portfolios and their components. Now, if I look at the cost metrics, what I'm going to look at is NPV of the costs. We had eight hundred and two million for Portfolio E, eight hundred twenty-two million for Portfolio F, and eight hundred and five million for Portfolio G. But remember, Portfolio F and G, as it says in the last row, under reliability, one's inadequate, Portfolio F, and Portfolio G is severely inadequate. inadequate, Portfolio F, and Portfolio G is severely inadequate. Portfolio G is really unattainable, but it's there as a point of reference. And what we want to do is look at, if we recount for the reliability metric, $10,000 a megawatt hour, and just look at, what's the marginal cost difference in terms of dollars in CO2 reductions? How do these portfolios fare? Well, it costs us $1,264 per ton of carbon to go from Portfolio E to Portfolio F, and to go from Portfolio E to Portfolio G, it's $2,200 a ton. Let's frame this a little more carefully. You could spend your money a lot more wisely if you were trying to improve the environment than going to Portfolio F or G. If this is about stewardship and making a bold statement about the environment, going with Portfolio F or G would not be that. It'd be irresponsible, and that's shown here. We see that in terms of emissions, transportation's 41% of the state. For Glendale, it's certainly greater, because you don't have a large industrial sector here. Overall, the state is, 10% of the carbon emissions are from the electricity sector in state. If you want to tackle climate change, the big slice of the pie by far in California is the transportation sector, and this means electrifying the transportation sector. It's the link between the power, the electricity company, and cleaning up the environment is through transportation today, in terms of being effective and good stewardship towards the environment. If we look at these programs I have here and costs of carbon reductions in dollars per metric ton, we start off with energy efficiency, see some forestry offsets. These are small programs, then we hit big ones: renewable electric vehicles, electric buses, and charging infrastructure. With the EV subsidy, and charging infrastructure having enormous CO2 reduction potential. If we compare that to the blue charts on the right, we see adopting Portfolio F is $1,260 a ton and $2,200 a ton for Portfolio G. They're cleaner. They're just irrationally cleaner from any economic perspective. You can buy a ton of paper today for about $10 a ton, put it in the ground. It's a little extreme, but the point is, there are other programs out there in other sectors that deserve your attention. Go for the low marginal cost reductions, not the high marginal cost reductions when you're making a decision. And we're recommending you go for the low marginal costs. There's a savings between Portfolio E and F. I think that's $26 million in NPV difference. That money could be spent much more wisely elsewhere. Furthermore, there's a $220 million difference in reliability that needs to be factored in. That could be spent as well, if you factor that in. But don't spend it trying to chase these high marginal cost reductions. That's just poor stewardship in terms of economic resources to obtain environmental goals. Finally, if we do look at Portfolio G, there are times when it's wonderful, and we can have normal operating ranges, everything's great, the lights are on, and it could be days like today where it's steaming hot outside and the batteries just don't have enough electricity to charge them. A line goes out. This happened in Kauai just yesterday, where their thermal generator went down, and there's clouds, and they can't charge the batteries adequately, so they have rolling blackouts. Be a tough thing to have on a hot day like today. Simple to avoid, though, and, you know, in terms of making the right decision and allocating public capital towards a common goal of environmental objectives, I think Portfolio E does it, and any other portfolio, while good, well-intended, doesn't realize the broader So I'm open for questions in the commission, or the council, excuse me.
Okay. Questions? We, but before we get to questions, I'd like to point out that it's about 26 minutes after I gave a 10-minute warning to turn in cards. So at this point, if cards are not turned in by 7:00 PM, we will not accept them. So at 6:56, 7:00 PM is the deadline for card submission. Okay. All right. Questions for Dr. Doris? Mr. Agajian.
What you would say to the person that will criticize you that you're using scare tactics?
I don't know what kind of scare tactics I'd be invoking here, Councilman.
No, because you said if you don't have the gas, then...
Scare tactics about reliability. Look, all we're trying to do is do simple math with respect to understanding the probability of an outage, looking at those outages occurring, and saying, what would this event, what would happen, how often? And it's simple. You have already demonstrated a precarious system today. I mean, we talked about this, I think, last December, December 21st, I believe it was. The system is vulnerable, and we have multiple case studies last year and the year before where there were blackouts in neighborhoods during peak load. There were different incidents that caused it, but if those incidents had occurred, there would have been. So there's multiple factors. This system needs this. That's not the question. I'm not trying to scare anybody. I'm just trying to do my job in terms of assessing what's the needs, and I don't want to overstate the needs, because that'd require extra capital. That'd be a waste of funds. You have better places to spend your money than just power that's going to sit on a cement block. You have broad objectives. I know with housing and other issues that you want to address. We want to do this lean and economically efficient, and I've tried to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Garpetian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Page three, I want to, there's a comparison between six cities, Anaheim, Burbank, Pasadena, Riverside, Los Angeles, and Glendale, and it shows the portfolio, basically, that they have, every city has. So our coal portfolio, our coal is about, very, very, very small, basically, it's about 5% or 6%, if I'm not mistaken, compared to Anaheim or even Pasadena or Riverside. And our renewable one is as good as Pasadena and better than Riverside, Burbank, Anaheim, and LA. And my question is, the yellow, yellow lines that indicates the natural gas, right?
Right.
Is this the natural gas that we currently use, or this is projected for the upgraded, repowered Grayson?
This is, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Garpetian, this is our current use.
This is our current use.
Yeah, this is 2017, right there?
Right. I want to, I want to, I'm trying to get that answer again. So it's 2017, so it's our current use, right? So with the new Grayson, what would happen to that natural gas usage?
So if I could get the additional information PowerPoint, because that's an excellent question, Mr. Garpetian, and I wanted to frame it in a way, my summation is this, and it's just to touch on a few things. So when we started the process, there was a lot of folks saying we were expanding the plant, that we were adding new gas. And even then, at the most, at our preferred recommendation in 2018, that wasn't the case. But today, it certainly is significantly different. New gas or expansion is not occurring. We are reducing both the size of the plant and the gas we use at the plant. So there is no new gas. The plant is gas right now. We're reducing the existing amount of gas, and we are not expanding, we are contracting. We are reducing the size of the plant from its current faceplate at 250 to 93. So as a comparison, and I hope to answer your question, if we look at this graph on the left, is the comparison of the recommended, tonight's recommended thermal units to 93 megawatts. So on the blue, you see what is the capacity percentage that we are predicting this, these units will be used, and we use for our modeling purposes 14%. So you see the amount of gas there that's in MMBTU. That's the blue. On the right, in the salmon-colored box, is the hypothetical, if you were to run those units 100% of the time, which we know is both physically impossible and certainly never necessary. But that's the amount of gas. Whoops.
Can you go back, please?
Yeah. So on the right is current Grayson.
Okay, that's what I was going to say.
In the same comparison. So you see in the blue box is a 14% capacity factor, and you see it is burning 6.8 million, million BTU. So you compare the blue boxes, 6.8 million gas today at a 14% capacity versus 958,000 for the proposed plan. And then if you look at the salmon-colored box, it's 19 million if you ran it at 100%. Again, the hypothetical 100%.
And the next question is that the amount, even if both projects use the same amount of gas, which they don't, because the new one will use a lot less, the efficiency of those gases or the emissions that they generate is way different with the old and the new one.
Absolutely. It's much more efficient. So you're talking about, if you look at something just as simple as the heat rate, so you have a heat rate factor in the existing plant of near 14,000, the heat rate factor for the proposed is more like it's under 9,000, probably 8.88. So you're looking, that alone, right there, that comparison, and just the gross decrease in the gas usage, absolutely, those, that equipment will run more efficiently, and our emissions will be significantly less. And I think that's what Dr. Doris was showing in his comparisons.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me go to others that may have questions. Okay, back to you, Mr. Agajian.
Back to the same chart, page three. Okay. We know Glendale and Los Angeles, they get electricity from Utah, right?
Correct.
Over there, they are now, used to be coal, and now it's gas. Am I right?
It's still coal today.
Correct.
I just want to see, in your calculation, did you consider the gas they are using, or coal they are using to generate the electricity? Is that considered in this chart or not?
Yes, sir.
It's a 2017 assessment from, I believe, EIAA data, and it, on the percent electricity mix. It's all publicly available data that an LA Times reporter took to create this chart, and real straightforward. Glendale stacks up pretty well, and I think with Portfolio E, it's going to be way ahead of its peers.
I just want, so it is considered in this calculation, this graph?
Yes. That's 2017. So if you look at that far box on the left, the gray, which is the coal, that's, we, only coal we get is the small percentage of IPP. Most of those other participants get a pretty sizable amount from IPP, but they also, I believe, get coal from other sources as well. So that is IPP today, and that is what our share was at the end of 2017.
I have a few questions, and maybe it's more Mr. Zern's alley. What is the total peak load that we're looking at in terms of the future demand of the city?
So for us, we have the current peak load of 350 megawatts, and then Dr. Doris has probably more handy the figures of where we're projecting to go by 2030. I believe we modeled 2038 for...
Can you go to slide 29? It's the slide next.
Sure.
The other one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hold that.
No, no.
The other presentation. Yep.
29?
29.
29. So there's the peak load. Let's look at the expected value. So we're at 338 in 2018, and we're going to 377 by 2038. That's at the mean, and the 95th, which could be realized, is 432, and 333 is the fifth. We planned for the expected peak load.
Are we factoring in the increase in electronic vehicles, EVs?
Yes, that's factored in.
For private autos? How about electricity use for transit buses? Are we factoring that in also?
Yes, it's factored in. Hold on, I have a slide on this. Just give me a second. If you go back to slide 28, I think that'll cover it. Or slide.
EV.
There we go. Slide 26 would be great, please. There we go. So here's the total demand. This is in gigawatt hours, and as we look forward in the future, we're looking at some rooftop solar.
Okay. I'm talking about our assumption for the EV load. Is that for personal vehicles?
180.
The Teslas, the Bolts, the Volt's, the whatever. Are we factoring in electronic, electric buses?
I believe there's an electric bus program included as well.
So how about, did you hear that the City of Berkeley passed a law banning all natural gas in homes by the year 2020 for new installations?
Yes, I'm very familiar with that.
If that were to happen, and is the home usage of natural gas a contributor to our total carbon footprint?
Oh, of course, it's a contributor. I think the question...
What percent are we talking about? It's 10%, isn't it? Or 7%? Something like that?
Yeah, it's around that. It certainly have the state residential use. I showed that on slide 14, I think I want to say? Nope.
So if we were to ban, if we were to ban natural gas in homes and we went to electric, would that, is that an assumption that you have in your?
No.
That's not. That would increase our electric demand.
It would. There's a 7% associated with residential natural gas as currently assessed by CC.
Let me see if I can help you, Mr. Mayor, tell you Glendale specific, because we got the statistic from the gas company. So this is 20, this is 2016 final data, 26,888,000 thermes used in residential, 3,700,601 in commercial, and 12 million in Grayson.
So here's my point, is that the projections that you have do not include a possible legislation, be it at the municipal level or the state level, to ban natural gas in the use of homes. And if such a legislation were to pass, that would significantly increase our electric demand. Is that a fair statement?
Very fair.
And I'm surprised where it shows up to 7% of our total carbon emissions are from residential.
So am I.
Well, I'm not. I mean, a year ago, I showed some slides, and part of my slides indicated natural gas burners, natural gas hot water heaters, and I was, there were some sort of chuckles going around, but it's a significant issue.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, I'll leave it at that. I want to save this for questions only. Earlier on, you were talking about the Wartzila internal combustion engines, and you said that in the future, they may be using some other renewable fuel.
That's correct.
What are you talking about?
Well, it could be a syn gas, like you're doing your landfill gas project. It could be hydrogen. It could be a mixture of fuels.
So it could be adaptable to those other renewable...
Right, and that's an important component, because I don't think you're going to be able to pipe in enough energy, particularly with the changes you're talking about in the residential, commercial sector with natural gas being more electrified and transportation being more electrified. You just can't literally pipe it in and store it for certain critical periods through the existing transmission network, high voltage transmission network. You're going to be relying on these units... You're going to be relying on these units into the future. They'll just be burning renewable fuels, that's all.
In slide 13, you're talking about negative net emissions. What are you talking about, negative net emissions? That means we're taking emissions away? We're not at zero, we're at negative? What do you mean by that, and how is that?
Okay. I'm just using CARBS metrics. And the California Resource Board is saying, look, you can credit reductions in the transportation sector effectively towards the electric sector on a municipal level. We're looking at here, taking credit for programs that the city could, or the state could initiate in the transportation sector as it positively impacts CO2, and those credits are, we're accounting for here.
And this is under which plan?
Under the existing plan.
Plan E?
Sorry.
The recommended plan?
Yes, the recommended plan.
Okay, I don't have any other questions. Ms. Devine?
Mine are more academic, and I think therefore probably staff, because they concern the staff report and items that are in the staff report. And first of all, on page 11 of the staff report, I'm sorry. Right, yeah, 11. You talk about, initially, we're going to put in a 50-megawatt battery.
Correct.
And then somewhere along the line, we're going to be putting in a 25-megawatt battery at a later date, and somehow I got the, I heard the date 2030. Is there a possibility that that 25-megawatt could come in earlier?
Yes, ma'am. 2030 is the estimated date we set, but it could come in earlier. We're not tied to that date.
Okay. I think what I'm trying to do is, this is a plan.
Yes.
It's not carved in stone, and some of it can be changed, tweaked, and redone. The IRP is going to be updated every year? Is that correct, or?
Well, it's required by the CEC to be updated every five years. The promise I made to you is I have no problem bringing it to you for a review each year. We have to bring to you the Power Content Label each year and review it with you. At the same time, I could review that, how it ties into the IRP.
In 2021, it appears that the renewables flatlined. There's no, it appears that there's no rise in renewables. Is that the plan, or are we flexible as far as 2021? We could find, you know, have more renewables?
Oh, no, we can find more. We have two different charts in there. One shows capacity, and we show another chart later on where you clearly see the increase in both, in three things, actually. You see it in EVs, and you see, then you see it in PV and storage, and you see it in energy efficiency.
And another thing that, here's what I wanted to bring up, is on page 13, where in the first paragraph, the last sentence of the first paragraph, I ask for a change here. It says, "GWP must return to City Council for approval before the proposed ICE units or BES could be installed." And I'd like to have that changed to purchased, to make sure that, because if we say installed, then that means we've already purchased. So I think we need to say, it's got to come back to council before they are purchased and not installed.
Yes, ma'am. That was the intent, we just didn't spell it out right.
Okay, all right. And my final, final question, very briefly. The DER program, and I don't know how many people read this, is going to cost $15.5 million a year, estimated. Can you explain how that cost comes about?
So...
And that would be kind of put on the ratepayers, $15.5 million.
Correct. If we could go back, I'm sorry. I had a cost breakdown for you.
Thank you.
What page?
It is, keep going, it's the last, the last graph. So it's the pie charts, the two pie charts down there. So the first one, if you, see the?
Can you see?
Yeah, that's the first one. So this is a breakdown of the bond. So this is the bondable capital, and it's set at 281 million. That includes the 50 megawatts of battery. The additional 25 would be paid for out of our capital program at a later date. So this is the amount we're recommending tonight. So you see, we've got 120.7 in thermal, that's the Wartzila units, 73.7 for the battery storage, which is a Tesla unit. The BOs is the demolition and construction, balance of site, then we have a contingency for all of those, including some AQMD air permitting costs. That's the bondable amount. Those are the items that can be bonded. The next pie chart shows the DER program. These cannot be included in the bond.
Distributed?
Energy resources. So for us, that includes photovoltaic, with battery storage, it includes energy efficiency. It includes, and energy efficiency can involve temperature control, demand response, lighting upgrades. And so as proposed, these are as the firms propose, that we're recommending that we continue to negotiate with. You see there, the total amount is 145.4 million. It's a rather front-loaded, in totality, it's a rather front-loaded proposition, so you see it, 62.4 million would be up in the first four years. This again goes into our MNO costs then. So this is something that we would have to look at, deferring with rates, or a combination of reserves and rates, but at some point in time, reserves drawn down require rates to rebuild. And so this is something that in our recommendation to you is, we like these firms, we certainly like these firms, we think the prices may be a little steep, and we're seeking your permission to continue to talk and negotiate with them. What are those, rate impacts? We put into the report, because of the front-loaded nature of it, what the potential for a first year impact could be, and then we would have to model this in our cost of service analysis to see what it would be going from that point forward. So two things we need to do, what the absolute final price is going to be for each of those, and then what it is comprehensively, and how that would fit into our cost of model.
So it's still negotiable, but I think it's...
It's expensive.
Right. It's something that the public should know, the residents should know, that green isn't cheap, green is going to cost, but, you know, it seems that that's what they want, and we'll deal with it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Garpet. Just a follow-up on what Ms. Devine was saying. When you say front-loaded, are you referring to the cost of DER programs? On page 17, it says $62 million is based on that first four years?
Correct.
That has to be paid off?
Correct.
And that would get transferred basically to the ratepayers?
That's a big initial hit, and so that's the one we were looking at.
Mr. Garpeti and I did my math, and I divided by four, and I came up with $15.5 million.
$15 million a year, okay. Yeah, so it's...
If you look at this chart so that we're, oh, I'm sorry, sir.
On the same chart, where you're saying the very first four years will be $62,400,000, that each year will be $15.6 million. And we have 100, I mean, 80,000 subscribers?
88,000 meters.
88,000 meters?
Yes, sir.
So that will be like $180 per year, per customer.
And also, I can say, that's really straight math.
That's like $15 a month.
But when you assign it across the ratepayers, we have to abide by certain regulations, and so it may not come out to exactly that, but if you did straight math, that's certainly the number.
But one thing, the 88,000 subscribers, not subscribers, the...
Meters.
Meters. The order of the meters, you are not going to divide, we can't divide that over the 88,000, because some of them will not be included. Am I right?
There is an issue with how we structure our rates, cost of service analysis, and make sure that, per Prop 26, that we have equity amongst the various rate-paying classifications. We need to work with the City Attorney's Office and outside legal counsel to confirm, but it could be that certain classes would have a bigger impact than others because that particular DER program is dedicated to one particular rate class. For instance, one of those is just single-family homes.
Oh, it's 88,000 is only single-family homes?
No, no, sir. 88,000 is the entire city. I'm just saying, if we were looking at it, it's potential that that one rate class, single-family homes, could absorb a higher than the $15 you were saying, because it may not necessarily be even math across all 88,000. That's something we need to review, and certainly something we'll continue to talk with these firms about as we negotiate.
Okay. So it might be that it's more than $15 a month. So my calculation was the lower end of it.
You went across the board, right, and it may be that some rate classes don't have any impact, and others have a higher impact.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, thank you, Dr. Doris. Stand by. I have over 30, 30, I have 33 cards. I'm going to call the speakers up and give everyone, I'm going to give everyone two minutes to speak, with the exception of a major stakeholder in this, and that is Mr. Brotman from the Glendale Environmental Coalition. If there is another major stakeholder, perhaps on the other side of this issue, please identify yourself to me when I call your name, and I will consider extending your time as well. So let's start with Dan Brotman, five minutes.
Good evening, council members, mayor, and city staff. We have very little time, so I'll cut to the chase. We commend Glendale Water and Power for the movement it's made since the Grayson question was last brought to council. A year ago, we were looking at an overly expensive 262-megawatt all-gas project, and now it's 63 megawatts of gas plus a sizable investment in clean energy. The new project, according to the IRP, is not only cleaner and more flexible, but cheaper. So to this question of the cost of green energy, that's a timing issue. The overall project on a present value basis is cheaper by 174 million from the portfolio that was presented a little over a year ago. So that should be clear. I commend Glendale Water and Power, but we need to remember how this change came about. It came about because the Glendale Environmental Coalition pointed out the flaws in the original proposal. Had we not organized, and it was at great personal expense to all of us, we could have been doing much more interesting and fun things, we would almost be certainly today staring down the barrel of an unnecessarily dirty and expensive project. So if I may, a big thanks to the community that worked hard to get to where we are now is in order. And I would like to ask all the GEC members and their supporters just to please stand up for one second. Thank you. Of course, we also owe a great debt of gratitude to City Council for listening and making a wise decision, so thank you. While we're happy with the direction that GWP is going in, we believe they can do a lot better. Our position is outlined in the letter we submitted two weeks ago. We are not, despite what some are saying, calling for zero gas at Grayson. We fully understand that Unit 9 will be with us for some time, as will Magnolia. The day when we talk about retiring those units will come, but it's not now. We are also not saying definitively that we can avoid any new gas. We believe that if the right steps are taken, as outlined in our letter, that we will not need any new gas. That's our hope, and that's our goal. In the meantime, we feel that GWP has not made a convincing case that it has done everything it can to forego the need for new gas. And so we're calling for a common sense, balanced, and I believe, low-risk approach for Glendale. What we're saying is, go full steam ahead on the clean energy projects. At the same time, we are okay proceeding with the preliminary engineering, the permitting and environmental review for the gas units. That's a major concession, but we think a sensible one. We would also suggest GWP make arrangements with the AQMD that would allow it to retire Units 1 to 8 now and start environmental remediation at the Grayson site without committing upfront to gas. Our preliminary conversations with the AQMD suggest that this can be done in a way that does not limit our options should we end up needing to repower later. This is important, because laying the groundwork will take time, two to three years probably, and we don't want to end up two to three years out finding that we in fact do need some gas, and we're having to start the whole process, and it's going to take another two to three years. I don't think any of us want that. So what we're saying is, let's get the ball rolling, and we think it's possible. In the meantime, we are asking staff to work diligently on the three points we put out in our letter. One is to negotiate better resource sharing arrangements with LA Department of Water and Power, which from our conversations with them, we know they welcome. Better resource sharing would allow Glendale to operate comfortably without having to waste ratepayer money provisioning to an N minus 1 minus 1 condition. Two, they should map out a plan to get additional transmission, which in any case is necessary for us to meet SB 100 goals. We know LADWP is willing to bring Glendale into its projects as long as we're willing to pay our fair share of the costs. And three, we need to identify more local distributed energy resources. GWP has built about 50 megawatts into its model that can be implemented within the next three years, and has left important pieces of the puzzle untouched, such as solar and batteries at commercial sites, or certain types of demand response. We need to work on these things over the next two to three years, and then, and only then, revisit the need for gas. The public has spoken, despite the city's recent attempts to dismiss our voices. Glendale residents want the lights to stay on, of course, but they want this done without worsening the air for our children and elderly, or contributing further to the climate crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brotman. I'm going to take someone, no clap thing? I'm going to take someone out of order. Laura Dominguez has a young child who's a little squirmy, and would like to perhaps get her, is it a young boy, home, young boy or young girl? So I'm going to jump ahead to Laura Dominguez. After Ms. Dominguez will be Adrienne Griffin, and then Steve Colton.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, council. Thanks for coming for a call in this. This is the Dominguez family, and my little four-year-old has been waiting anxiously to share something with you guys. So you want to say something more?
No.
Okay, say it loud, so we can hear you.
I wanted to say, today I wanted to say not to build that nasty gas plant, because it makes it so hard for us to breathe, so we shouldn't make it. So that's why I need medicine, because I just don't want nobody to not, it makes it so hard for us to breathe, so that's why I just want to tell you not that. So that's why nobody to make that thing, so that's why I have a sign in the front, so I can tell the city people to not build the nasty gas plant, because it made it so hard for us to breathe.
And tomorrow, what I wanted, what she was trying to say is that she has asthma, and it's very difficult for us to go to the park, and she's smoking, I mean, she's playing in the playground, there's people smoking. So I want to ask Mayor Najarian a question. I noticed coming up the stairs where the pictures are, that you happened to be in office over a decade ago, at the time that the Clean Air Ordinance or the Smoke Free Ordinance came around. Is that correct? Am I understanding, yes? So my question is, you know, what has changed in these 10 years? It seems like at that time, the health of your constituents was very important, and it seems like now, with all of these ideas, it doesn't seem so.
I'm sorry, was there a question?
Has anything changed as far as the constituents and the safety and the healthcare of the constituents?
Well, that's a little ambiguous, but no, nothing has changed. My concern is just the same.
So take it a go, and I came, my question then, I want to talk more about the Smoke Free Ordinance. Can you hear me now?
Kind, if you could move a little closer, and we're giving two minutes to everyone. I hope we're not on a five-minute clock. All right.
So... So there's a lot of things I would like to talk about, but really quickly, I would like to share, you know, as a full-time parent, as a full-time employee, as a Glendale resident, homeowner, taxpayer, a lot of our... Time away from my children is time away... Time away at work is time away from my children. So I would like to ask that you consider looking into that, the cost too. I had a whole speech that we left at home, but in an event, I just would like for you to consider and listen to the professionals about clean air and all the climate changes of our children. Thank you kindly.
Thank you. Next speaker is Adrienne Griffin, followed by Steve Colton.
Good evening, city council. Can you hear me? I'm Adrienne Griffin, and I live here in Montrose. I am one of your constituents. I'm in accounting, and two weeks ago, Glendale Environmental Coalition came out here and was on your steps. And they came in the chambers, and I believe they spoke as well. And one of the questions that has come up is how many people were actually here two weeks ago, and I've had some conversation with you about that. So I wanted to let you know that we had more than 400 people on the steps two weeks ago. It would appear that, you know, there was a question in the Glendale News press about that because of a public relations speaker from the city of Glendale, and they said to the Glendale News press that the numbers were a lot lower. The number that they used was actually a quarter of what was actually signed in. So I wanted you to know that I just counted every single one of these people, and there are 370 names here on this piece of paper. And what that means is, is that there really were a percentage larger than 370 people because we know... Don't frown, it's true. Not everyone signs in. We just don't. That's how it works. Not everyone realized that there was a sign-in sheet, or they signed in on somebody else's sheet for something else, and they thought they signed in for us. So we know that there were at least 410 or more people there, so we'll say 400.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Steve Colton, followed by David Eisenberg.
Good evening, council members, staff members, and mayor. My name is Steve Colton. I lived in Glendale for 38 years and eight months. I've been a ratepayer the entire time. What I want to do is deliver one message for the Glendale Environmental Coalition, of which I'm a member, and that is, please, don't oppose us. Work with us. I want to speak to the invocation where it says, "We will be a better city if we work together." We've been offering help to the GWP to host events with vendors, to work together as a coalition, as a member of the city and as a stakeholder. That hasn't occurred. They've declined our offer repeatedly. So we want to change that. We're here, we're ready to work together with the city. Some of our efforts included calling vendors to get them to participate, and in fact, 50% of the finalists were contacted by us. So we've been successful on the side. We could be more successful. The process could have been more successful. We would have had a better RFP. We may have moved this process along a lot faster if we worked together. I'd like to show you one thing. We have contacted over the year... Oh. Yes. Over 300 people who are willing to participate in the virtual power plant without much effort. We could do a lot better as a coalition with the city. And they've given us our names, our addresses, and they're ready to sign on as soon as it gets implemented. So once again, I ask, please, work with us, be inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colton. David Eisenberg, followed by Glenn Webb.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, council members. My name is David Eisenberg. I've been a Glendale homeowner since 1985, and I'd like to talk about the installation of the new generators. The date that I believe I saw on the plan was that the installation would start on 2021, which is two years from now. I would assume that that means in the meantime, you have to demolish the existing buildings and clean up environmentally and get everything ready for the new building. That's two years. In a year ago, we needed 262 megawatts of power from gas. Now we need 93. So my question is, if we commit now to definitely getting those generators, we may be, in two years, there may be more things that we could do, and we won't need any new gas. So I'd like to urge you not to commit now to something that might be a stranded asset, but put something in your proposal where there's a check after, before those power units are bought, that we actually need them and there isn't anything else that could be done. Thank you.
Stay tuned. We'll be addressing those exact issues when we start our discussion.
Thank you.
Glenn Webb, followed by David Dowell.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Glenn Webb, 26-year resident of Glendale. I'm going to depart a bit from what I had planned to say. First thing I want to say is I'm 100% behind Mr. Brotman's proposals that he has made tonight and the changes to the resolutions that might be needed to implement those. I think that we have a couple of significant failings in the current IRP, and I'll talk about two of those. The first is a rather technical issue about the battery, the battery sizing. I've given to the council and to the commission and to GWP a detailed analysis of the battery sizing that matches Glendale's needs, an optimization of the battery sizing. My studies indicate that the proper amount for that battery is about 700 to 740 megawatts, not the 75 that's currently being planned. Now, recognizing that we need to start somewhere, we're taking a significant step in putting in 50 or 75, and I'm completely okay with that, but I believe that in our long-range plan at 2030, 2045, that that number, the correct number, is something on the order of 740 megawatt-hours, which is precisely the size of the Tesla battery that is currently being installed at Moss Landing for PG&E, and that'll be operational within 12 months. So we can actually look at a 730-megawatt battery by Tesla at Moss Landing in about 12 months, operating. Second thing is the basic plan itself. We have heard from GWP that we cannot get to zero carbon without new transmission and that the best we can do by 2030 is 60%, which is what SB 100 requires. If we can't get to 100% by 2045, then we need to start taking a hard look at transmission, which everyone has said here. Everyone in this room acknowledges that we need new transmission. So we need to put that in the plan. We need to say, what is it that we really need to do? We may have to pony up $100 million or something to cooperate with all the stakeholders in Southern California. So the final issue I would want to say is that when we produce an update to this IRP, and I would like to see it in 12 months...
Mr. Webb, if you could conclude, please.
...that that be a zero-carbon plan, that that show us how all these pieces fit together so that we're going to meet SB 100 by 2045. And anything that's less than that as a plan is just not a plan. Thank you.
Thank you. David Dowell, followed by Robert Reeves.
Hello. Thank you for allowing us to speak here. I really appreciate it, and I want to say that GWP has done a great job. We... My wife and I have owned a home in northwestern part of Glendale, and just really terrific service from GWP, and we appreciate that. I'm here to talk about the battery pack. I think we've talked about that a little bit, touched upon it, and I would just like the city just take yet another look at the battery pack and simply commit upfront to the 75 megawatts and also delay the additional gas generation. So that's why I'm here to talk about. I strongly believe we are at crossroads here and must address the climate change head-on. The larger battery pack with other green technology can help us address this critical issue. I understand that these are difficult decisions, and I don't take it lightly, but we also have an opportunity here, and I think we've discussed some of those opportunities. We have an opportunity of showing strong leadership on this issue. This will be a positive reflection upon this city. We can be leaders here in this city. I know from personal experience, I've leased three Chevy Volt cars, and I now, my wife and I own a Tesla. So I was really happy to see in your proposal, working with Tesla. And I can tell you from personal experience that green technology is solid and it can be depended on. So in closing, I would like to wake up in the morning sometime and see the city of Glendale taking a leadership role in both climate change and in green technology. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Reeves, followed by Lynn Wang.
Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Robert Reeves. I'm a volunteer with the Sunrise Movement, a movement to stop climate change and create millions of good jobs in the process. I won't dwell on what we've heard again and again, what science tells us unequivocally that climate change is the most fearsome threat to all life on Earth in modern times, that we have a decade to transform our energy grid to 100% renewables, that we must enact radical change across all humid activities if we are to mitigate the worst of its effects. These effects include enormous loss of life, displacement of hundreds of millions of people, many of them among the world's most economically disadvantaged, the devastation of natural environments, the collapse of economies, the scorching of arable land, and the scarcity of water, in short, suffering everywhere. While Mr. Doris advocates a dirty gas future for Glendale, making us culpable in climate change globally, the LEDWPP prepares to move forward on the largest, cheapest renewable energy contract in history, the ELAN project, providing 7% of the total energy need to the city of LA for under $0.02 a kilowatt-hour from solar and battery power, specifically 400-megawatts solar and 300-megawatts of battery power. I think that would keep the lights on even at the Americana. If Los Angeles can bring in massive amounts of power from affordable energy sources and renewables at half the cost of new gas power, why here in Glendale are we stuck in the past Exxon-bilt? Mr. Doris wants to talk about poor stewardship. Voting for dirty gas today without allowing time for analysis and rebuttal would be the height of poor stewardship. If you choose to move forward today and vote in favor of dirty gas at Grayson, you implicate all of us here, who are guilty by our presence in this chamber, into an infamous chapter of negligence, in which Glendale will share a special place as the last city in the state of California, giving any serious consideration to new gas power. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Devine.
Mr. Zern, are we involved in ELAN?
We are.
Are we trying to get a piece of that pie?
Yes, ma'am. We are.
We are at the table. Thank you.
Lynn Wang, followed by Michael D'Souza.
Mayor Najarian, members of the city council and staff, my name is Lynn Wong, and I'm a Glendale resident with the Sunrise Movement. I'm also an environmental scientist and statistician by training. I have to ask you to say no to new gas at Grayson Power Plant and wait until all renewable options have been completely exhausted before considering it again. I've been down in Baldwin Hills, where a benzene leak from Inglewood Oil Fields made a bunch of people sick. I've been up in Porter Ranch, where a gas leak from Eliso Canyon made a bunch of people sick. And I've been watching this debate here about Grayson and Glendale, all cases where the gas utility had to interact with the critical public, and I've noticed that in every instance, the dynamic is the same. The public is flooded with technical jargon. It's clear community transparency is not a priority. Question anything, and eyes start to roll. And so it's very hard for those of us in the community to ask questions, let alone get answers. Even those of us with backgrounds can't really peer review at all because we don't see anything except for the version of the report that's ready to present. Writing the word "community" on one or two slides doesn't mean you care about what we really want or respect us in any way. We have expertise too, and this process doesn't even acknowledge that exists. I also want to point out the passage in Sacramento of AB 1054, a statewide measure that essentially indemnifies gas utilities from any future wildfires it may cause using taxpayer money. This is in a time where the vast majority of wildfires are in fact human-caused. We're creating a precedent where the people who are making decisions about our energy don't even have to suffer financially if they make bad decisions or are careless with public safety and health. Steve Zern doesn't live in Glendale, neither does any of the management, and in a few years, they'll probably retire and leave the consequences of their decisions for the next guy. I don't think that management has any skin in the game, and the chances of them facing the blowback if they're wrong is slim to none. Gas utilities and their management are shielded from the consequences of their decisions at every turn, politically, financially, in their careers, so of course, we're skeptical. Of course. The public has been burned by fossil fuels enough times that we don't just want to accept what's been handed to us anymore. Meanwhile, we are literally at a crossroads... Anyway, don't use hot days to push us into accepting more of the same. If we really care about preventing hot days, we'll stand against climate change and fossil fuels.
Thank you. Michael D'Souza, followed by Nicholas Billing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, and city staff. I'm Michael D'Souza. I'm a longtime resident of the city of Glendale. I'm a homeowner, I'm a ratepayer, and now a realtor. But prior to becoming a realtor, about a year and a half ago, I worked for the last two decades in the advanced energy sector. I worked at Southern California Edison as a program manager in demand-side management, and prior to that, I worked in the solar industry. So I have a little bit of insight into some of these issues, and all I want to say today is here, I am in favor of the studies and the research that's been done, and I really commend the city for pushing the envelope in terms of going to a more sustainable energy future. But I also want to just raise a couple of points. Glendale is looking at a significant portion of distributed energy resources and battery energy storage in this integrated resource plan, and that's a good start. The utilities in California and all over the country and the world, in fact, have done a lot of experimentation and case studies to show that there's a potential for much more. I personally was responsible for some energy partnerships with the Southern California Edison and some of the cities and counties that we served, and one in particular that I was in charge of was a demonstration program with the city of Palm Desert, where we were able, over a six-year period, to reduce the city's energy consumption and demand by 20% and save the city's entire community $20, $25 million in energy costs. Another example of what Edison was able to do is when the Santa Nofera Nuclear Generating Station had to be retired in 2012, that significant amount of the generation lost that they had to figure out what to do with this massive nuclear plant that was serving southern part of their territory as well as San Diego. They did it all with a significant portion with demand-side management, with encouraging people to use less as well as shift the load with energy management. So in summary, all I want to say is that the economics and the technology is changing rapidly, and I encourage much more further study into more of the sustainable and clean energy technologies and options. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas Billing, followed by King... Nicholas Billing, followed by King Riley.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Billing. Glendale's been my hometown for 21 years. The comment I want to make here today is in regards to the jobs issue as it pertains to today's proceedings. IBEW Local 18 is here today. Thank you for being here, sincerely. We really do appreciate the work you all do. Without the tradespeople, society grinds to a halt. But let me make this clear. This is not a jobs issue. Clean energy promises so many more jobs than fossil fuels ever could or ever will. And they are good, safe, long-term union jobs. While jobs in the fossil fuel industry are falling because of automation, not regulation, that will continue no matter what happens here in Glendale. Fortunately, the clean energy sector is creating large numbers of jobs, especially in solar, batteries, energy efficiency, and grid upgrades. The challenge here lies in transitioning workforce, and that's what we should be focused on, not saving a dying industry. In fact, the presence of Local 18 here today isn't even about jobs. It's about union bosses wanting to maintain membership in their specific local so they hold on to their own personal power. Their concern is not that their workers will lose jobs as they know they can get re-employed in better positions somewhere else. The real concern is that these jobs will be in a different union organization, so they will lose local membership. It's very parochial. We need to make sure we don't get caught up in these petty politics. We need to be focusing on the bigger picture, which is saving our air and our water and our planet, and creating good, lasting, healthy jobs for our union workforce. Thank you.
Thank you. King Riley, followed by Tom Metzler.
My name is William Riley. I'm a physician. My medical practice is here in Glendale. I just want to dispel two myths about climate change. The first is that climate change is in the future. Well, I think you all know that many effects of climate change are already occurring in California. In 2006, we had the worst California heat wave that killed 600 people. In November 2018, the Woolsey Fire, which was from Simi Valley to Malibu, killed three, destroyed hundreds of homes, and 300,000 people had to be evacuated. It's now 2019. In 19 of the last 20 years, the temperature, the average temperature of the world and California has been the hottest on record. With the Woolsey Fire and the fires in 2018, the total economic loss to the state of California, as analyzed by the AccuWeather Company, was $400 billion, making it combined the most expensive natural disaster in the history of the United States. The 2018 fires killed at least 200 Californians. This is only a start, unfortunately. Our temperature has gone up 1 to 2 degrees Fahrenheit since the year 1900, and it is definitely going to go up further. The second myth is...
You're out of time.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was two minutes.
It was two minutes.
Okay.
It goes fast, though, I know.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments. Tom Metzler, followed by Barbara Dawn. Thank you very much. Joanna Pringle. He told me there were people seating time. Thank you. Donnie Stemp, followed by Oscar Montana.
I just wanted to show my support for as much green energy as possible. When I moved to La Crescenta three years ago, a main reason I did was because I looked at an air quality map and saw this little patch of green, and that was La Crescenta, and that's why I moved there. And I love it. I love the parks. I love the trees. And I really think we could be a leader around LA for a sustainable renewable future. I like that GWP sends me the notices to how to be more efficient. I don't know why I haven't seen those encouraging solar, rooftop solar, but I feel like that's something, you know, they should be... Hopefully, that's part of the plan, subsidizing maybe some rooftop solar, at least just encouraging it, because like I have electric cars, but I rent, so I can't really do that. But that mix of electric cars, which can store some energy, which you could use to then plug into your house to run your AC in an emergency, and solar, I mean, these are all really sustainable and reliable energy sources, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oscar Montana, followed by Trevor Gonzalez.
Can we flip that order?
Trevor Gonzalez first, and then Oscar.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, so I have a prepared statement here. The Glendale Water and Power Commission recommended adoption of the presented RIP. You have an obligation legally through the city charter to provide reliable, efficient, and reasonably priced power to your residents. If you agree to reduce the megawatts that you can produce, you will be inviting disaster. Global warming is real, and our world climate condition is a precursor to what could be happening here in our city. Your current allowed generation using fossil fuel is about 340 megawatts. You are proposing to reduce the nameplate permanently. Once you establish a lower megawatt repower, you will never be able to increase that number again. Two years ago, your highest peak load was 347 megawatts. How can you expect to support and sustain the residents of Glendale when you cannot generate your own power? This proposal is for 93 megawatts of new power and to keep the existing Unit 9 with 48 megawatts maximum. That is 141 megawatts at max capacity. Yesterday, you were at 208 megawatts. Today, you are around 266 megawatts, and tomorrow, we are expected to be at about 282 megawatts. Your current capacity is 124 megawatts. The existing units are in need of replacement. Your highest peak load ever was 347 megawatts on September 1st, 2017. In a severe power outage, you are an island. Everyone around you will separate, and they will utilize their own resources for their own citizens until the system stabilizes. During blackouts or brownouts, all utilities will be looking for imported power, and it will not matter whether it's green power or brown power. Renewables will be the least important issue. How will you divert your 141 megawatts to your hospitals, your nursing homes, your senior centers, or the most needy? The truth is that you will probably overtax your system in your time of need and cause more issues until the system stabilizes. Batteries are not the answer. They are meant for smoothing out the load and not for sustained power. Batteries cannot provide power for more than one or two hours after generation or transmission has failed. Batteries currently have a 10-year lifespan with Tesla. Can I keep going, or you want this guy to pick up?
I can give you about 10 seconds more.
Okay. Let me just finish these bullet points. Batteries currently have a 10-year lifespan with Tesla, but the reality for industrial batteries has been about four to seven years. That means that you will have to repurchase batteries at least every 10 years, and that is a new expense. The depleted batteries will then be harvested for recycling, but not all of the waste will be recycled. What happens to that hazardous waste, then? Do we store it in the earth? Does the city have ownership of that waste? And is the city held liable for anything that happens to that waste? Arizona Public Service has been in the battery energy storage...
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Oscar Montana, followed by Paloma Nafarate.
Good evening, councilman. Just basically finishing off what Trevor started and everything. My name is Oscar Montana. I work at the power plant in Grayson here. I'm a power plant mechanic. He mentioned about the Arizona Public Service. They've been in battery storage for seven to eight years. There's, on YouTube, there's videos about the battery fires for them. Hawaii also has serious battery fires. Fire personnel are advised to let the fire burn and to evacuate a three-mile perimeter. This is what's coming into your communities. The toxic fumes that are released are cyanide and hydrofluoric acid. This is a densely populated city. Three miles is a lot of people. Trevor and his crew will be working on these batteries and will be expected to be the first responders responding to these battery fires. We want to see a clean and efficient world, but not at the expense of the citizens, ratepayers, and workers in the city of Glendale. Now, who really cares about the workers? We're talking about all those that harvest the cobalt for these batteries. According to CBS News, there are estimated 40,000 children harvesting cobalt in the Democratic Republic of Conga. These children spend much of their day breathing toxic fumes. Even if we choose not to use cobalt source there, we are encouraging the practice. We are all part of this social injustice. Along with this, the ratepayers are expected their rates to increase substantially. Glendale will be forced to pay whatever prices asked of them if they want to have a power. And remember, no power means no water. We are here to support good union jobs. We are also here to tell you that technology is not good enough yet. We need to have our power plants ready to respond when all else fails. Imagine a heat wave that takes out all the power in our county. We will wait in the heat, we will suffer, and some will die. We are not being dramatic. Look to the east, look to Europe. It is true now in other places, it is better to have the generation and not need it than to need it and not have it. IBEW Local 18 recommends that you adopt Plan B, NG 340, 340 megawatts is the low end. This plan also takes into account load growth due to the electrification and transportation. Imagine all the EV charging stations along with a potential bus or rail. Plan B is 240 megawatts of local generation plus 48 from Unit 9. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Oscar. Next speaker, Paloma Nafarate, followed by Joshua Christensen.
I was wondering if I can use one minute of my time and give the other minute to my fellow younger counterpart. Is that okay?
Does she have a card, too?
Yes, she does.
And what's her name?
I just don't want her to wait forever.
What's the young girl's name?
Madeline. I had the orange card, but I wanted to go.
Oh, okay. Okay, you had that. So you want one, and you want two?
No, 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 one and one.
One and one? Okay.
So it's fair.
We can do one and one.
Thank you so much.
Hello, mayor and council members. My name is Madeline. I spoke to you last month regarding my concerns about the new gas at Grayson. I'm glad to hear that you are considering renewable energy, but I'm also still worried because you're also thinking about expanding the gas plant. When I learned that you are still considering fossil fuels, I felt scared for my own life and the life of my friends and family, and also for the residents of the Los Angeles area. Because I know the effects that the polluting emissions will have on my life and the life of many others. According to a report from the American Lung Association this year, the LA area has some of the worst air pollution in the country. Environmental journalist Beth Gardner reports that roughly 100,000 Americans die each year because of air pollution, which is more than car accidents and gun violence combined. The American Thoracic Society reports that 1,340 people around that amount in LA area die each year because of air pollution. The fossil fuels released by Grayson are making it worse and worse. I hope that you make the right decision today, and when you make that decision, think about my life and the life of the residents of Glendale and the LA area. Thank you.
And I just want to support that 100% because, you know, if you check in the news, you're probably not getting the news, and it's not your fault. Actually, the news are not reporting the truth, which is that climate... We're suffering a climate emergency, and we only have less than, I mean, we say 12 years, 11 years. You know how many species we have lost in the ocean? The heat waves are happening because actually it's climate, we have a climate emergency. So we're causing it by continuing this. So I want to encourage that you keep going with the plan to deface it as much as possible. And you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Joshua Christensen, followed by Danielle Reynolds.
Good evening, mayor and councilwomen and councilmen and staff. And my name is Josh Christensen. I live in the Pellinconee Housing Community Area of North Glendale, right by the power plant. I'm also representative for the Carpenters Union, represent about 52,000 members, hardworking, middle-class citizens. And we support this project. We're ready to build. We're ready to put our members to work. We're ready to train through apprenticeship, through a state-approved apprenticeship to help better lives. We're also, we're here to give the community better job opportunities. You know, these jobs consist of a good wage, healthcare, benefits, and a retirement plan to be able to lay their head down in dignity at night and be able to provide for their families. We're ready to build, like we said, and we're asking to approve this part of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Danielle Reynolds, followed by Ron Miller.
Thank you for having us. I was at Los Angeles Department of Water and Power this morning, and I hear a lot of the same excuses when we talk about transitioning away from fossil fuels and towards clean energy. The first is cost, and I wonder what the cost of our future is. By saving money now, you're borrowing from the future, and that loan has a nasty interest rate. Anybody knows that the larger down payment you make in your mortgage, the less you pay over time. That's basic. I don't even own a house. I probably never will with this economy, but even I know that. As our planet is burning, I hope our last words aren't, "But we saved so much money." I am going to live through the repercussions of the decisions made in this room and rooms like it. And those sweet little things in the back of the room that were causing ruckus, they will really have to live through those decisions. I live in Atwater Village, just a few miles from Grayson, but I'm pretty sure that the emissions from that plant aren't going to skip my house because they recognize my Los Angeles zip code. And those emissions certainly aren't going to ignore the rest of the planet. We're all connected. We're all in this together. In terms of reliability, I mean, I'm very impressed with the amount of work that's gone in. I'm grateful for the level of planning and research that's happened in the past year. I urge you to continue going down that road. Technology is changing so rapidly now. It seems ridiculous to me that with 11 years left on the climate crisis clock, we can't come up with a better option. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Miller, followed by Laura Dominguez.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Miller, how much time do you need?
A couple minutes. I'm not going to waste your time.
I presume you're a stakeholder in this.
We're all here. We need to get home to our families. So Ron Miller, Executive Secretary of the LA Orange County Building Trades, here on behalf of about 140,000 skilled and trained men and women in LA and Orange County. Quite a few of them live in the city of Glendale, and I want to commend the city council and the staff and Mr. Zern for listening to the community the last time we were here. We were here at one of those long meetings, but you guys listened. You went back to the drawing board. You put together a comprehensive plan that the community was for at that time. And I think we need to move ahead with this. It has all the parts and pieces. The technology that you guys have suggested is there. I'm a little foggy on the battery storage. I think we need to go slow on that. You know, the lithium for them batteries, they're bringing mine down to South America where the environmental conscience is not quite there like it is here in the US. So we have to be careful of subjecting other countries to get our power. We have the ability to mine lithium here in California, but the very same folks that want to shut the natural gas off don't want us to mine the lithium. So, you know, we all need to do our part towards a well-diversified future for energy. And that means natural gas. That means oil. Until those airplanes start flying on batteries, everybody takes airplanes, and quite a few people drove here tonight on gasoline. So it's all comprehensive, and we need to take it slow, but do it in the right way. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Laura Dominguez spoke earlier. Jane Potell, followed by Marie Freeman. Jane Patel, followed by Marie Freeman.
Welcome back, Mr. Cantaro. And my name is Jane Patel. I've lived in Glendale for 15 years, and I currently reside one mile from the Grayson gas plant. I want to thank you all for carefully weighing the issues surrounding Glendale's energy future. This is complicated stuff. Although it might seem straightforward to just follow GWP's advice and the best path forward, I want to remind you that they have not always advised you well in the past. Last year, GWP was pushing an expensive 262-megawatt gas expansion, and they insisted that a plant of this size was needed to keep the lights on and stoked fears of old people sitting in 100-degree weather heat without air conditioning. They said clean energy was too expensive and too unreliable. They ridiculed us for saying otherwise. It wasn't until hundreds of residents repeatedly showed up to Glendale City Council in the spring of 2018 that council finally instructed GWP to rethink their plans. A year later, they are saying that 93 megawatts is a significant, excuse me, 93 megawatts of gas is enough. In fact, their new plan, which now includes a significant amount of clean energy, is saving Glendale rate pairs now over $170 million in comparison to their plan last year. Now, had you listened to GWP and their consultants last year, we would be stuck with a big, dirty, expensive white elephant right now. This begs the question, do we actually even need 93 megawatts? Now, GWP has one relatively new unit at Grayson already, Unit 9, and they share ownership of the plant in Burbank. Do we know for certain that we need that much more? Can we really rely on the information GWP and their constituents are giving us now? I'm skeptical, and you should be too. I'll wrap up and say we think more can be done. The community is looking for leadership here, and it's not going to be easy, of course, but that's why GWP has paid the big bucks. We hope and expect you will ask them to dig deeper and come back with a better, cleaner, and even cheaper plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie Freeman, followed by Ernesto Pantoja.
Good evening, Council members. Mr. Mayor, thank you for listening to us. My name is Marie Freeman. I live in Glen Oaks Canyon, and I will focus, as usual, on Shoal Canyon landfill. An earlier version that I've read of the IRP stated, and I'm going to quote these because I want it to be the wording in the document itself and not my interpretation of it. Again, one major component of the IRP process is to identify the best strategy for developing capacity devoted to burning landfill gas. And then it goes on. As part of a larger repowering project at the Grayson Power Plant, GWP wishes to consume the existing landfill gas for the purpose of generating electricity from supplementary or supplemental fuel. So these things have been tied together from the beginning and logically so. The IRP continues, again, quote, "Engines to burn gas would be moved from Grayson to Shoal to avoid significant costs associated with air permitting and to avoid cost and regulatory uncertainty of maintaining the landfill gas pipeline," unquote. But the IRP does not give specific evidence to support why there are costs to be avoided and regulatory uncertainty. Exactly what does that mean? And I've looked through many documents to try to figure it out. I have some clues, but not completely. There are certain questions, then, that arise in the public mind. One of them, again, very specifically, what are these costs and regulatory uncertainties that would make installing new equipment at Grayson and using the existing pipeline undesirable? You know, we just need the numbers and the facts. Second set of questions, how do other alternatives for using landfill gas compare in terms of environmental and financial costs? And again, last sentence, landfills fill, and when this one is full, it's not going to be a source of electricity. So be very careful about how that equipment is scaled in cost, so we don't lose. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ernesto Pantoja, followed by Herb Mendelson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Council. My name's Ernesto Pantoja. I'm here on behalf of Sergio Rascón, Business Manager, Laborers Local 300. And we're here to speak to the jobs that this project will create. As you know, we always talk about construction jobs and how to put our people to work, but one thing we never do is put a face to those jobs and who we're actually putting to work. The laborers and a lot of our brothers and sisters in the trades, we open the doors to people with previous felony convictions, people, trying to give people a second chance at life, sometimes their last chance, where other people in different industries, especially the private industries, aren't willing to give them a chance. We do. We give them a chance to have a family, buy a home, and create a career. Build a career that's based on good pay, benefits, that they can take care of their family with. And the thing is, with the laborers, we're not the ones making a lot of money out there. I know we're talking about driving, you know, Teslas and things like that. I would welcome you to come to one of our membership meetings and see what our members drive. Those members can't drive Teslas. They can't afford even Priuses. So when we start talking about moving towards clean energy and things like that, I want people to remember that not everybody out there can afford these luxuries. They are luxuries. And for our members that work hard every day, and remember, who puts those people to work that we want to get out of crime? People that we want to, we want them to be productive members of society. It's the laborers and many of my fellow brothers and sisters that stand here behind me. So I ask you, and I urge you, please support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Herb Mendelson, followed by Martin de la Cruz.
Honorable Mayor and City Councilpeople, I'm speaking for the adaption of the 2019 Integrated Resource Plans, the IRP, specifically the commercial solar power aspect of the plan. When you okay this resolution, you are giving the green light to starting a robust renewable energy program with almost no upfront costs and no cost of entry. You will be authorizing the GWP to bring on perhaps 20 megawatts of clean solar power. That's about 10% of replacing Grayson's capacity. We will deliver the power to Glendale through a feed-in tariff program where GWP only pays for the green power it receives. There is no huge investment, no maintenance costs, they're all paid for by the owners of the buildings that are selling you the power at 15 and, I'm sorry, 14 and 1/2 cents a kilowatt hour. The feed-in tariff program is very successful in Los Angeles. We ask that you kind of, the LED WP, that you use that program, especially it's very beneficial for owners of big warehouses, big box stores, and movie studios, which we have here in Glendale. We ask you to implement this tried and true method to help save the world one Glendale roof at a time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Martin de la Cruz, followed by Greg Astorian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. Thank you for the time. My name is Martin de la Cruz. I am a member of Laborers Local 300. I am one of the ones that Ernesto Pantoja was speaking about, that gave me a chance at making a livable wage, to be able to buy a home. I spent, I did eight years in the Marine Corps, a veteran of the United States Marine Corps. Served my country, came out, really didn't have anything else to do after getting out. There weren't too many companies that were willing to employ a machine gunner. I don't know what I was going to do after that. So I got into one of the trades that embraced me and gave me opportunities to be able to move forward and create a career for myself. And that's essentially what we do in trades, is we create careers. We don't just give jobs. We help people, we help with the homeless, we've helped, you guys, like, invitation to one of our membership meetings, we invite you guys to go to our trade school where they have Alumni Night, where they come and they share their stories of what they've done, how the unions helped them. A lot of people have been, like, in jail, on drugs, they've changed their lives around, gotten their families back, gotten homes. And essentially what this would do is create those kinds of jobs for residents of Glendale and the surrounding counties. I always bring my family to the Americana. We at Friedas, we love it there. During the holidays, we come, we love the way they set up everything for the pictures for our kids, love to do that. So we do bring money into the city also. Although we don't live here, we do bring money into the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Greg Astorian, followed by Chris Roth.
Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council, my name is Greg Astorian. This is not the Game of Thrones. We certainly are not Orianna. We do not carry a dagger that is made out of Valerian steel that you can with one blow strike and do away with the threat of climate change. In the absence of that, I think it is important for you to understand that the rest of the city of Glendale, the majority of the city of Glendale, need and ask and want moderation, reasonable moderation, principled moderation. Let me, with what I said, let me go on to the main issues that are my concerns and the folks that I've been talking to all along. By the way, I have attended all of your IRP meetings, and I've been part of your focus group as well. I'm going to touch on transmission lines. This is an issue. And if time allows, I will share a story about a person that undoubtedly will be known or is known by my friends on the Coalition Party, Michael Skelly and Green Line Energy. If we have at capacity at one of the transmission lines that is bringing the most renewables that we use in the city of Glendale, then we have to be very, very careful about it. The fact of the matter is that, from what I've been told in the focus groups, our city has tried to negotiate with the Los Angeles authorities and has not gotten anywhere yet. Unless I see a contract, I would not believe it. I need to have at least another two minutes because I think I'm making points that are very, very important.
Everyone is making important points.
Here's the difference. We have heard from our friends on the Coalition for the past hour and a half, and I delightfully heard what was said. I think it's opposite for you to allow me to make some very important points.
My decision would be no. However, as you know, any ruling of the chair may be overturned by a vote of the council. So unless there's a move to overturn my decision...
I'd like to hear from Mr. Astorian. I know you're a local realtor.
Is there a second on that?
One minute.
Besides, he is a commissioner, so maybe...
One minute, Mr. Astorian.
Why is it that we're not talking anymore? Why is it that we don't fit this 50% renewable that we're at in the city of Glendale that have been around? Why doesn't that fit in this narrative? The city has done a lot to get to that 50% renewable energy level. Why is it that we're not talking about the fact that these gas turbines are going to be used four hours a day, 120 days a year? That means, do the math, Mr. Mayor, do the math, that means that 11 months of the year, these things are shut off. No green house gases, no carbon created. Why is it that we're not telling this story to the people of Glendale? Believe me, the people of Glendale want secure environmental surroundings. They want environmental security, but not at the price of economic insecurity. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Astorian. And thank you, colleagues, for your input. Chris Roth, followed by Arun Ravindran.
Good evening, good evening, City Council. Thank you very much for taking the time to hear us out on this, and thank you also for reconsidering the initial plan that had been proposed with the massive expansion of the gas generator and capacity at Grayson. I am very heartened to see that the new proposal has dramatically diminished the reliance on expanding the gas production at the plant, though there is still, you know, almost $1 million in expenses related to the implementation of the internal combustion engines that would continue to burn fuels one way or another, whether they be natural gas or anything else. The reality is that climate change is going to continue to be a massive, massive burden for our entire society. And every time that we're burning any fossil fuels, regardless of whether or not they are renewable fossil fuels, we are adding to that problem. And by having these gas generators, even if they're only running for a small portion of the year, for a small number of hours each day, we are adding more carbon to our atmosphere, and we are continuing to add to the problem that we already have a massive deficit to overcome. The only way that we're going to actually be able to make reasonable changes within my lifetime and the lifetimes of the children that were present at the beginning of this discussion and who are dailies trying to go to sleep at this point, is that we need to begin immediately trying to sequester as much carbon in the ground as possible and stop pumping more and more of it out to be burned as fuel for energy production and for transportation. We understand that planes are a current part of this transportation discussion, as is always brought up by the folks from the unions that want to remind us about how we have to be able to get around. And we're not calling for the ending of all air travel, but what we want to do is see the expansion of more renewable travel. And that has to also be part of what we're doing with our transportation infrastructure here in Glendale and across the entirety of the Los Angeles metropolitan area as we move toward electrification of our infrastructure. Thank you very much.
You, Arun Ravindran?
So as we've all sat here and listened to all the presentations and watched a bunch of, you know, graphs being posted up everywhere, there's been a lot of numbers, a lot of, you know, number crunching, a lot of detailed analysis, and they've all seemed to look at just the bare bones of the cost of electricity and fuel and where this comes from. On none of these charts have we seen the costs and the risks associated with not doing anything. Now, you guys have all clearly stated, you know, an effort and a desire to do something towards the future, you know, which is why you guys are discussing these matters. But the truth of the matter is, you know, someone just mentioned Game of Thrones, right? And, you know, how much is an HBO subscription, right? $10 a month. There was a discussion during this analysis of an increase of like $18 per month to go from one, you know, one strategic infrastructure change to another. This, to me, seems like pretty low cost towards the future, you know, of Glendale and the people, and, you know, what is the cost? You know, these are all projections into the future. You know, these are numerical projections into the future, and they all seem to leave out a lot of human, a lot of ecological, a lot of health costs out of these projections. And that's a major flaw with your analysis. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, question, Mr.?
Not from the general, from just related to...
Oh, sorry. Mr. Carpet.
The calculation that we had for the DER, right?
Yes.
$145 million, and the first four years is $62 million. How many households per year this program will serve? My understanding was like 200 households a year? Is that correct?
No, no.
To provide...
In one of those, it's a, one of the proposals had 3,000 to 4,000 homes as part of their total program.
For next 20 years?
No, no. They would subscribe those people very quickly, within two years. We factored their project over 20 years.
Okay, so you factored it over 20 years.
Right.
It would be like 4,000... It would be like 4,000 households out of...
3,000 to 4,000 out of about 33, 34,000 single-family homes.
Single-family homes. But besides the single-family homes, we have, our total electric meters that we have is 88,000, right?
That's correct, sir.
So, it would be 4,000, 4,000 out of the 88,000.
Correct.
So, it's not that it will provide what we need in general for, for, to keep the lights on, basically.
It, it's a, it's a really good comprehensive proposal. It's 53 megawatts in totality. That put, that, that's a, that's a big package when it comes to DER for any utility currently or in the future.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Scott Peer. I think he left. Okay. There's one more person after you.
Mayor, Council members, my name is Susanna Liberty. My family is directly affected by the power plant, and I am extremely concerned that we do everything we can to reduce the use of fossil fuel down to zero, if at all possible. I know that, I'm a member of the Coalition, and I know that our, our official position is different from that, but I, as, as a consumer, would like to ask you, please, to find whatever way you can to reduce the, the use of fossil fuels here. I, I don't understand why the Environmental Coalition is pitted against union. I don't get it. I'm a, I'm a, I've supported unions all my life. I've been a union member, and I don't get it. There are going to be jobs, no matter how we do this, whether, whether we use fossil fuels or not. There are still going to be jobs, and hopefully, there will be union jobs. And I ask the unions to please consider what our proposals are and ask yourselves if that's not better for the community as a whole. And I ask the Council also to consider eliminating as much fossil fuel as you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Ite. Is Mr. Ite available? Did Mr. Peer wander back in? I believe that that concludes all the cards that were submitted before 7:00 PM. So, I am following with our roadmap. I am going to turn it over to my colleagues and Mr. Agajanian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Los Angeles has partnered with five other cities, one of them being Glendale, to build coal-fired generating stations in Utah. This is a long time ago. City of LA would have the rights to nearly half of that power. The 5.4 billion project opened in 1987, just before global warming began to be a national Power companies across the state are shutting down now existing gas plants and canceling new ones. They do it everywhere. That trend has been driven by the improving economics of solar and wind power grid. I agree with that. And some, at this time, some natural gas will help us keep the lights on. The solar and wind cannot be relied on 24 hours a day, in my opinion, seven days a week, at least not with a big amounts of energy storage. But I believe a few years later, this, my sentence, will be different. But 100% clean energy is the future. However, we know that. We have to also recognize that if you go to totally off gas immediately, you are not going to be able to meet federal reliability standard. If you go now, so we cannot meet federal reliability standards, and that's not acceptable either. So, trying to balance those two is the real challenge which we have at this moment. Gas units can also stabilize and strengthen the utilities, utilities electrical system, but it should be last resource, in my opinion. We will get to the point which no longer we need gas for turbine or any other way to be used. Energy generation, storage, distribution, and management have seen great changes in a very short period of time in the recent years. We see every day something new is coming on the market to make, to lessen using the gas. We started this process about two and a half years ago, proposing a 262 megawatt of new gas generation. And I wanted to explore further options. At that time, I met Mr. Zern. He took me to somewhere in this building that I never been there before. It was this small space on third floor, right? So, he admits. So, this was true story. This was two years and sometimes ago. And I said, I can't, I, I'm not accepting 262 megawatt. So that's why he came back, telling me that they worked on this project, and what he was offering at that time, at a later time, maybe 2018, that what we are going to have is 191 megawatt of gas power. And of course, at a later time, in my office, on this level, he came back to me and he told me that they worked again months ago, of course, and what they're going to do will be 131 megawatt of gas. So I was happy that we are going right along. And, but I said, it's not acceptable, but you're on the right direction. So it's here, you can verify what I'm saying. However, at the end, he came up with this 93 megawatt of gas, which I'm mostly satisfied at this moment. And now we are at 93 megawatt gas generation. I believe this is because of the changing technology and not out of mistake or error on the part of GWP, in my opinion. We are now adding battery because they have become more cost-effective. We are adding distributed energy because it's effective. We are adding, as I said, distributed energy because they have become more cost-effective. And we are also adding load reduction technology because they are becoming available in the market. GWP is responding with the changing technology, in my opinion. We started with 262. Apparently, in my opinion, we are in the right direction. GWP, as I said, I want to repeat, is responding with the changing technology. I think it's great that GWP listened to the residents and that the residents spoke with a loud voice in expressing their preferences for the future of Glendale. I also want to recognize all the individuals who participated in the process and expressing your preferences, including the Glendale Environmental Coalition for galvanizing the public. The future is renewable. I have no doubt about it. That is something I think we all agree on. We also agree that electricity has to be reliable and dependable, given our very modern lifestyle and the expected electrification of transportation, which will increase demand for technology. And you see, the demand is going higher and higher. They provided, following years, what the demand will be. The IRP presented today by GWP is a compromise between the needs of environmental responsibility and power reliability. It is based on technical knowledge of GWP and the desires of public. In my opinion, it's a good plan to start with, given what technology we have now and the projection of what we will need in the future. So I want to emphasize, we have to look at what we have, the technology, what is providing us, and be mindful of future. But things are changing very fast, and by the future, I'm sorry, by the time we start implementing this plan, new technology may come to reduce or eliminate the need for gas. I believe it. I reviewed Glendale Water and Power Commission's recommendation. They have been appointed by us, City Council members, and they came up with some recommendation and suggestion. And I have received over 400 emails. I glanced through them. I can't say some of them are same emails, mass emails. Some of them, people, they said what they want to see in Glendale. And also, I met 30 people about this issue. So, I propose we adopt this IRP as a plan with conditions. And the conditions which I think we have to come up with is, one, and as I said, this is, I picked up from Commission and Glendale Coalition, which they are present here, GWP must request City Council authorization prior to purchase and installation of gas units and must present to City Council any new or improved technologies. Day by day, we see something is changing, that develop from now until such time that may further reduce the need for gas generation. Two, if gas engines are installed, the use of gas engines shall occur during situations such as peak weather or adverse system condition, or we are having, getting power from other places. Reporting of gas usage at a repowered Grayson power plant shall be made available on regular basis. As part of the annual power content, content label reporting process, GWP shall report back to the City Council regarding the IRP, which will include any and all developments in DER, renewable energy, clean energy, and transmission to identify the city's progress in meeting its SB 100 goals. GWP shall, shall update Council on addressing Glendale's transmission and reliability challenges in order to achieve the goals of SB 100. Just recently, New York Governor said that in, during 30 years, it, they have to get to 100% renewable energy. So we have to work on this diligently. My objective with the above conditions is to balance our need to plan with our need to be environmentally responsible and have reliable energy for Glendale. We have time to prepare the site and remove the old equipment, so we have time. We don't have to rush to have gas generation. In the meantime, let's use that time to be vigilant to any technology. I want to emphasize to this that we have to be careful with new technology that may further reduce the need for gas generation. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Devine?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. We've been at this for a long time. A lot of work has been put into this. So many expert speakers, ideas, suggestions, DWP, or GWP working overtime to, to bring in the new ideas, the RFPs, and, and get everything coordinated, and I thank all of you. In order to, to make a reasonable and informed decision, you know, it's, it took a lot, it took a lot of work. I, I think I've read maybe 400 emails and tried to answer almost every one. Many of them were very positive with suggestions. I've read articles that I can, you know, I know more about power plants than I ever thought I would in a lifetime, but I've learned an awfully lot in the last few months. I've gone to outreach meetings. I went to the Coalition and addressed them, and, and I thank them for, for all of their hard work and, and ideas and advocacy. Very important, very important. I always tell our residents that if you want to impress Council and, and move forward on your ideas, you have to show up, and you all showed up. Thank you, and I thank you. Many people, individuals and groups, several briefings from staff, and, and all of you who have talked during oral communications. Now, in reading the emails, it seems, emails and listening to everybody, it seems that, I found that there were like three different views on how Grayson should be repowered. First, many people wanted Grayson repowered without using any gas, any gas generation. Well, while there's no doubt that this is the ultimate, I mean, we're all working for the same thing. We all want the same thing. It's just how do we get there? The, I'm not convinced that we can transition into, you know, today, into 100% renewables. We've heard from the doctor that that's impossible. It's just not reliable. We have to take, we have to have this plan. We have a plan, and we can take it one step at a time. Second, a lot of people wanted a decision on how to repower Grayson postponed. And I wrote to them, and I said, we can't postpone it because we have to have the IRP approved by July 31st, plus the fact, and I, I'm sure that the, the Coalition knows, and a lot of our residents may know, that every now and very frequently, we are dealing with a failure at Grayson. So the power plant has really, really aged, is aged, and, and something needs to be done. Now, yeah, a lot of people came in and said, well, you should have done this a lot sooner, and that's true. That's true. Councils, no offense, Councilmember Quintero, previous councils could have, could have, should have, would have looked at this issue, but unfortunately, that just didn't happen. So here we are today. And finally, many people, including the, the leadership of the Coalition, wanted this current IRP plan, along with the seven resolutions and two motions, approved with conditions. Now, some of those conditions, Councilmember Agajanian has mentioned, and I agree with quite a few of them. And so forgive me if I repeat, but I think it's, it's worth hearing. And these are conditions that I'm going to be basing. You know, there's a very important decision coming in a year or two, once the EIR, the revised EIR, is finished, and the permitting is finished, and demolition has begun. Again, the demolition can't begin tomorrow. Some people say, well, we want it done right now. Well, it can't start tomorrow. We have to go through the paperwork, the permitting, the engineering, et cetera. So that's going to take a while. So we have time before we make a final decision. So I would move... So I would move to approve this agenda item, the IRP, and the items one through nine, with some conditions as well. Now, we, of course, this is a plan. It can be tweaked, it can be changed, and, and that's what I want to make sure is in the book, and that's why it's called an Integrated Resource Plan. I want to add the wording, as I mentioned, the wording that Council will be approving any proposed, or will not approve any proposed ICE units before they are purchased. We have to approve like 60 days before they're purchased. We can't, in the report, it said before they're installed, but we had that changed to purchase, and I think we have an understanding with, with staff. With a condition that no less than 30, 60 days prior to the GWP returning to Council to ask for approval to purchase the ICE units, GWP shall submit a report to Council that fully evaluates and makes recommendations regarding the following. Number one, provide additional ways that we can provide additional distributed, the DERs, beyond those that are stated in the IRP. That would be new technology. You know, we have time. We can continue to look at more ways to bring about this distributed energy resources, to provide our progress and options. And I, I really want to hear this before, 60 days before the project. I want to hear it intermittently, the transmission capability, additional, how we can get additional transmission capability in order to meet or exceed our SB 100 goals of 100% renewable energy before 2045, because I think that's possible, and I think that's our goal. I want to also see options and programs made in renegotiating agreements with LEDWP regarding access to reserves for Glendale, so that when we're in the N1 minus one situation, we are prepared. And also, options and progress made in reducing or eliminating the need for five ICE units based on technology and cost improvements. In other words, down the line, we will look at, do we need two? Do we need, as I understand it, when the time comes, this Council can approve one unit, two units, three units, four or five. But by that time, in one or two years, however long the paperwork, the permits take, we, we should have a pretty good idea, and hopefully, we'll make the right decision. And finally, I'd like to see us develop a plan that sets goals and methods for reaching that 100% renewable by 2030. Let's bring back that greener Glendale plan, the green energy plan, any of those, so that we can take a look at what we can do and make a plan, get that revised and done. As I said, we all want the same thing. We all want to be 100% renewable by 2045 or before. This is a plan. It's a pathway. I thank everybody that was involved in, in bringing this, this to Council. I think it's fair. I think it's, it brings us reliability, and I think that's what our job is. Our job is to keep the lights on for all of you, and to do it with as much renewable energy as we can possibly get into our community at this point. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I neglected to report that the position cards have been tallied, and I have 48 cards in support of the staff recommendation. I have 30 cards opposing it, and I have two cards without any preference indicated. Mr. Carpenter? I'm going to save the old guys for last.
I didn't say that. You didn't. Well, I have my notes all over the place as usual, but I'm trying to get to it as quickly as possible. First, I want to thank everyone for being here and being here time and time again and voicing your opinion, because it's very important for us to hear from, from the community. I have a few questions before I make my comments from staff. The transmission lines, the projects, is it the Elon project that was mentioned? Are we, are we negotiating with them at this time? And how much, what's the, how many megawatts is that? I know, my understanding is like 25 megawatts, and can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure. The Elon project is the City of L.A. project through SCAPPA. It's a 400-megawatt total project with batteries. They originally were going to have that as 100% LEDWP project. We negotiated 25 megawatts with them, and once they have, have approved the project through their process, which will be in August, then I will bring that to you for final approval.
Okay. Thank you. And how many years you've been working here with City of Glendale, Mr. Zer?
Thirty-three with the city, sir.
I just want to say that was a cheap shot about Mr. Zer not, not living here. I really resented that. I mean, we all have our differences of opinion, but 33 years is a huge commitment to City of Glendale. I, I really resented that comment, and I wanted to, you know, bring that up. Is the, does DER that we have in our, in our program today, does that include the virtual grid that we were talking about?
Yes. One of the proposals by one of the firms, which is utilizing photovoltaic and, and energy storage, is essentially the, the virtual power plant concept.
So we are working on that as a, because it's, if you, if you look at the, the staff report, and that's 20 pages, it doesn't explain every single part of those, those, those plans. I just want to make sure that public knows that, that the virtual grid, virtual power plant, part of it is, is included in this DER. There was a mention about batteries and the cutting fire and the lithium farms or mines or what have you. Can you, are these batteries very safe at this time? Or, I know they are, but I just wanted to bring it up because, so put all of these issues to, to bed, if you will.
So, so Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, that is, fire safety was an issue we, we looked at very closely, and in that particular case, obviously, we involved Chief Lonzis with, in that as well. Yes, there have been two notable accidents of recent time. There was a, a large fire in South Korea, and more recently, they had an explosion in Arizona, and that resulted in the injury of certain firefighters. The batteries that are involved in, in those accidents are not the ones that we are recommending. One of the reasons that we like Tesla, among many reasons, was their detail and their, their attention towards fire safety. And just the way they manufacture the units, they manufacture the containers, they have cooling systems for their batteries, it is just head and shoulders above from a sophistication level and a protection level of what the others offer. And we brought, when we brought Tesla down to talk about that specific issue, Chief Lonzis and Chief Lynch were involved in that, that presentation as well. Nothing's perfect, but I think in, in, in what we're recommending that we approve, we have, I think, recommended the best option in that particular aspect, fire safety, along with many other areas that we think they are superior.
Do Pasadena, any of the neighboring cities, Pasadena or Burbank, do they have batteries in their system at this time?
No, sir.
How about Los Angeles?
They do have some, yes.
Some batteries?
Yes.
Okay. And also, there was a speaker that, speaker that said that we, we never talk about the renewable portfolio that we have, and also, these engines are not going to be run 24/7, and we did talk about those issues. Am I correct? Because Glendale has a 47% renewable. It goes up and down because of the transmission lines, but I mean, this, we are expecting to use 14% of the capacity, basically, which is in our report. So the talk was out there. Well, my position is, look, the, the climate change is a, is a global issue. It's not just a Glendale issue. It has to be addressed. That's, that, there's no doubt about it. We need to, as was mentioned here, and by the public, by our GWP, by my colleagues, to work on transmission lines and get our fair share anywhere we can, and take part of the, the new projects. Shared resources is important to be part of it. Additional resources, if L.A. has any extra power that we can use, we have to look into it. This is a limited notice to proceed. Am I correct? And any future, basically, 100% approval will come back to the Council, and that is the, the final notice to proceed. So everything that public wants to see will be, again, discussed here, and then we'll decide. We are permitting for five engines. At that time, we can say, no, go to two engines or three engines, or one engine, or no engine. At that time, we will decide what the number of the units are going to be. It was mentioned about leadership in L.A. I think Glendale is the leader in this area, and our portfolio reflects that. And I want to go back again to page number three of our report, which is this page. And if you look at the, I don't know if we can put it back on the, on the screen or not. If you, if you look at our renewables, it's more than Los Angeles. I mean, small City of Glendale, population 200,000 against 4 million, population 4 million, City of Los Angeles, our green portfolio is, renewable is a lot larger than L.A. It's almost as good as Riverside, which is shocking. Pasadena, we are almost equal to them. We are better than Burbank and Anaheim. And look at the, the one to the left is the coal portfolio. I mean, that is about 5% of our portfolio, which is coal. If you look at the neighboring cities, the coal portfolio is not equal to the, the greenhouse gas it generates is not equal to the, to the, to the natural gas. A small coal, coal portfolio that we have, it generates a lot more than the gas that we have. Same thing with the, with the Riverside and Pasadena and Burbank. I mean, if you look at 30% with Burbank and Pasadena is part of their portfolio, that, that 30% coal portfolio generates a lot more greenhouse gas than our gas, gas generated, greenhouse gas by, by, by our Grayson Power Plant. What I wanted to say is, we, we have been very active, and the former Council members, my colleagues here, they have been proactive in being responsible for our city and our residents. And yes, some of these engines or the, the power generating engines, they could have, you know, we would have done what, what, if we had done what Pasadena and Burbank did, we wouldn't be here. They, every time the engine went out, they replaced it. Every time the engine went in and out, they replaced it. And in last eight to 10 years, City of L.A. repowered almost 22 or 24 of their OTCs, basically. And if you look at the amount of power they generate, it's 3,400 megawatt. And the ones that are being retired, they're not retiring right away. It's 2024 through 2029, and they may even ask for an extension. So, so our goal over here is pretty much the same as everyone else, and we want to have a sustainable, reliable power, but reasonably priced for our residents. That's all we're looking for. Provide power with the least impact on the environment. And this Council will do that. It has been doing it. I want to emphasize that one more time, that even the DER program that we have is, is a very comprehensive, very responsible way of doing it. And hopefully, when that comes back, we will have a better deal, because we are going to keep negotiating with them to make it more affordable for, for the residents as well, so they will not, you know, bear the burden of high cost of electricity. And one other thing we need to look into is this, the systems that we are going to install, they are adaptable to new technologies. You can upgrade them, like a computer. When you, when you take the chip off and put another one into upgrade your computer, that's the simple way of putting it, if I'm, if I'm correct, Mr. Zer. And, and they are, they're, these are the, the system that we can upgrade it as the technology changes. And one more thing we need to look into, and I want to ask the staff to look into as well, is renewable natural gas, which is, I'm going to read this, this statement, which was, you know, the state has a, state legislature has a mandate that reduction of short-lived greenhouse gases. This is methane, the primary source of which is dairy farms. And I know that the gas company and many other companies that are working with these farms, to capture that gas that is being released today in the, in the environment, capture that gas and turn it into energy, that has two positive impacts. One is that it's not being released in the environment. On the other hand, they don't have to extract any more gas from the ground to, to, to feed the, the residential neighborhoods or the power plants. And that renewable gas has to be part of our program to look into it, if, if we can purchase renewable natural gas in the future and, and not rely only on natural gas that we extract from, from the ground. And I want to close by, the report that, this is a report that I asked in 2017, and the residential customers in, in the city use 26,880,000 therms of gas, and commercial uses 3,700, 3,700 therms of, of, of gas. And a therm is 100,000 BTUs. And Grayson, this is the current one, is 12,859 million therms. So if the plan is to go away from natural gas for every residential household and retrofit them with electric appliances, you know, your stove, your, your AC, HVAC unit, your fireplace or what have you, we have to be able to provide that power for them to, you know, one goes with the other. In order to get rid of gas in residential neighborhoods or residential use, we need to be able to provide power for them. So with that, I, I agree with my colleagues and the suggestions they made. I think this is a great step to a better future for Glendale. And one, one, one more thing, Mr. Mayor, if I may, the construction cost, there was this misunderstanding that this entire $281 million bondable is, is all for the thermal plant. It's not. As it was mentioned, 50 million is the BOS, which is the construction and demolition. The batteries are $73 million, contingency is $36 million, and the equipment is $120 million. So it's the entire $280 million is not the equipment. So if you want to compare apples to apples, I think we need to, that's important to understand those numbers as well. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm excited to move forward with, with the suggestions that my colleagues, especially Mr. Agajanian. I want to thank you, because when this issue came up a few years ago, you had this number of 90, 95, and you kept saying 90, 95, and we ended up with 93, which is a, is a great number. That's why you're an engineer, and I'm a real estate broker. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I'm ready to move forward as well.
Mr. Quintero?
You go.
Welcome back to City Council.
I was going to say, you can go first. I'm in better shape. So, yeah, well, I'm impressed, because years ago, 9 o'clock would, we'd be in the middle of the card, so I'm glad everyone was succinct and cooperated. So let me also thank the GEC for what must have been, or is countless and countless hours that they've dedicated to this issue, mobilizing people, doing the research, having meetings, et cetera, et cetera. And also, the Sunrise Movement, for those that don't know, it's not just a local movement, but in fact, across the country. It subscribes to the Green New Deal, and I personally believe in the Green New Deal and hope that that, or most of those issues come to fruition. So, yeah, I've been around for a while. So yeah, I've been around for a while. I was elected in 2001 and I remember it was clear to me that removables, renewables, and specifically solar and wind were the future. I'd seen it in Europe and, and had done a lot of reading. I find it interesting because back then, the issue was always cost and cost and how expensive it is. And I remember the, a former head of, of GWP, I asked him to bring back the cost of the naval forces, the aircraft carriers in the Persian Gulf and the air force bases across the Middle East. No one seems to factor that into the cost of, of gas and oil, et cetera. Now, things have changed a bit because in the United States now, of course, we've got all of these natural gas fields and so that's changed a bit. But still, we still have the same military efforts, we still have the same cost to continue to bring fuel either into our country or allow it to go to Europe and other parts of the, of the world. I also had the opportunity, and maybe at the time, this was a standard thing that city council members did, but for sure, I jumped on the chance to go visit that Utah plant. The plant itself was spotless. In other words, when you walked around the facilities, it was just unbelievable how clean it was. Of course, what they were sending up in the air, no one particularly talked about that. But we also had a chance to go into the mines. We actually went into the mines where we saw what was taking place and met the miners that had been doing this type of work. Most of them actually being from northern Arizona, northern New Mexico, they were second and third generation miners. What we saw in that coal mine, the other council member that went with me, we were just stunned. We were just stunned at what it was like for human beings to go down. We literally went straight down, we went horizontal and then straight down into those mines where these huge, it was just surreal. And so that turned me off even more, quite frankly, after I'd taken that. I just, I just couldn't fathom that, that men, at that point, it was only men, would go down there. And when we questioned them, because they, the shift was coming, they were all doing it for the money, period. No one wanted to be a miner, no one cared, no one wanted their children to be miners, but they literally were commute from northern New Mexico and Arizona to Utah just to work in those, in those mines. So the issue tonight, I think we need a flexible plan for the future and I believe that we have one. I think combining solar and batteries, something that didn't exist years ago, and of course, whatever wind we can, we can purchase, I think that will work well. I think it's essential, we start with the city facilities, doing as much solar as possible, and then move to the commercial opportunities in this city, whether they're large corporate entities like Disney, storage, huge storage companies, all of the buildings that we have here in the downtown, all of the multifamily buildings in the city. I think there's excellent opportunities going for commercial installations. I think that's true of residential, but I think it's more time consuming, it's gonna be much more difficult to get to the 4,000 homes that are sort of our first goal. I think it's gonna be much more difficult to do that than it will to, number one, do city facilities, including when I say city, I mean Glendale Unified School District, Glendale College, whatever state buildings may be around or county buildings that are leased. I don't believe any of the county or state own any buildings here, but they certainly lease some of the buildings here in the city. Then the second thing, obviously, is the transmission and what we can do to work with LADWP and everyone else, Burbank, Water and Power, Pasadena, et cetera, to combine forces to beef up our transmission capabilities and specifically to what they call the Southwest, the connections to Utah and the connections to the East. My opinion is that that line coming down from northern California, as it goes through Pacific Gas and Electric, that's a bankrupt utility. We have no idea what is in store for PG&E. We already know that they have talked about turning off the power when the wind blows, et cetera, the type, to try to avoid the kind of fires that we've had in the past years. So I'm, I really think our future is with the Southeast and Southwest transmission line. And then finally, I think we need to minimize the use of these natural gas engines. I think we have to do the planning to have them as a possibility, but obviously try to minimize, number one, the number that we install, and number two, when we have them in place, if they're necessary, to obviously try to run them the least amount of, of time. I also, if we don't do it this evening, then I hope to do it at the next meeting, I would like to have an ordinance that any new construction in this city, any commercial building, any multifamily building that's built in this city is required to have solar panel, to have renewable energies involved in, in that, in that construction. I think, yeah, I didn't know exactly what that was. But I believe it's in, is it 2020 or 2022 when the residential?
2020.
Right. So in 2020, all new residential construction will require solar panels and I think we have to do the same. We've got large buildings coming online. So that, I think it's easy to pass. And I'd like to do it as soon as possible because normally, when you get a permit, you're done, you don't have to, you know, it's too late to come in with, with an ordinance. So let's get that done as soon as possible. However, then I think we can get a little more sophisticated and also approach what is gonna go in that building. Not only LEED's requirements, but what are we doing running natural gas up two, three or four stories in a building? That makes no sense at all. So try to get those buildings to be all, all electric. I'd also like to include, when you are going to redo a house, if you are adding on, let's say, more than one-third in terms of new construction to an existing structure, I think that should also trigger solar panels and other types of, of projects to make the home even more, more efficient. But that's gonna take a while, so I'd like to do just a commercial, a commercial ordinance to talk about, or to institute a solar panel requirement. And then finally, two of the speakers hit it right on the head when they talked about the cobalt mines and the degradation down in, specifically in Bolivia, but other parts of the Andes where the lithium that they're mining is an ecological disaster. So I hope both GEC and the Sunrise Movement and other Sierra Club, I hope they pay attention to this. I hope that there's new technology coming on and more stringent requirements for some of the mining that's being done to promote what is obviously a very positive situation and that's batteries and, and solar panels.
Having, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, having solar panels is the state law that if you are gonna have with new building, you have to put solar panels on the building.
Just for residential?
Right.
Not for commercial?
Not for commercial. So January 1st, 2020 is for residential only.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank everyone in the room for conducting themselves in a manner which makes me very proud. This could have been a very contentious and disruptive meeting, but it was not. You were all very courteous, polite, and in doing so, your message came across and I think we all listened very closely to what you said, at least in this room. I don't know what may have happened in the other locations. I was here the whole time. Thank you to the GEC, the Environmental Coalition, for continuing to keep this issue at the forefront. Thank you to the tradespeople, the building trades, IVW, the laborers, the carpenters, everyone who showed up, I, and the employees from our power plant, thank you for coming and letting us know your position. And the residents whom Mr. Agajanian counted 400 emails. I did not respond to those emails and I was chastised because they said, "Well, one of your colleagues answered us." So now I know, we have a confession from Ms. Divine. It's 400 emails, how can you possibly answer each and everything? I've got things to do, I've, you know, I have a day job, I'm an attorney during the The resource portfolio recommended in this Integrated Resource Plan will firmly establish Glendale Water and Power as a national clean energy leader. The future envisioned herein represents a complete transformation of the way GWP provides reliable, affordable, and clean energy resources to the citizens of Glendale. In 2021, the Grayson Power Plant will retire after nearly 80 years of service. GWP will replace the local capacity with a diverse mix of energy resources, with a goal of providing the cleanest power possible while maintaining reliability at a reasonable cost in a transmission-constrained location. This was the opening paragraph of the Integrated Resource Plan and I fully endorse those remarks. I think we're overlooking the great strides that prior council have done in getting us off coal to a level which is about 6%, which as the graph indicated that Mr. Carpetian put up, really shows us as a leader in the basin. And once we implement this IRP, I think we'll be off coal completely. I think our only coal, if I'm mistaken, is majority, if not all, coming from the Intermountain Power Plant. So that will really be something that we should all be proud of. I have moved miles from my position about a year ago. A year ago, I thought that the 262-megawatt thermal power plant was the way to go. I'm glad that we took a pause to look at the current state and to focus on renewable energy resources. We have come a long way, I have come a long way since then. I'm very happy that even the, the thermal power units can be converted to hydrogen, which has very little, I don't, I don't think we can say that they're emissions-free, but very, very low emissions. Or, as discussed by Mr. Carpetian, can use renewable natural gas, which is otherwise vented into the atmosphere, which is much more dangerous to our environment, factors more dangerous than carbon dioxide. So if those combustion engines can be used to destroy the renewable methane, which is being generated by the cows in the Central Valley or by landfills throughout, that will be something great. And I know that Southern California Gas Company is working hard to harvest that renewable natural gas and send it to facilities. Perhaps, perhaps it could come to Glendale. Batteries are great, but as Mr. Quintero pointed out, and as my presentation a year ago pointed out, it comes at a tremendous human cost. Remember the pictures of those little kids harvesting the cobalt in the Democratic Republic of Congo? We talked about the fires that can be caused by the runaway thermal reaction in those batteries, where the only way to extinguish them is to let them burn out. They do produce cyanide and hydrochloric acid that would be vented in the community. The Tesla system that we're talking about has a failsafe supposedly, it has a built-in cooling system. But, you know, cooling systems can fail. That's what happened at several other power plants that had major issues. I won't, I won't get into the details on that. Part of our problem is we are a island. We do not have the ability to connect to the renewable power sources that are available out there in the Southwest United States or in the North Pacific hydro geothermal. We're constrained. That's what makes us different than so many other cities. You know, Lord knows, if we didn't have that constraint and the direction of previous councils, we may be, you know, we, we could have been perhaps renewable by this time, or at least carbon-free by this time. We get 100 megawatts from our Pacific Intertie and that's part of the problem when we start talking about reserves. Not only is PG&E a shaky partner and their promise to cut power, even if they don't cut power and there's a fire, those lines can be destroyed and really leave us in a lurch. That's part of the problem that we face, is we have to make account for losing that line and the next largest line, which is 48 megawatts from either the Magnolia Plant or from the Southwest Intertie. I, we all received a letter from the Sierra Club, and I think it was co-authored by the Glendale Environmental Coalition, that did say, "Go ahead and approve the IRP. It's a good start, but please keep working on things like the new technology, whether it's solar technology, whether it's expansion of our DER program, and whether it's transmission availability." We will continue to do that. This doesn't end the process. In, in that regard, I wrote a letter to Mayor Garcetti from Los Angeles at the suggestion of the Sierra Club and the GEC, basically imploring them to make transmission available to Glendale, letting them know, "We're on the verge of making this decision in our city to develop a power plan and if you could cut loose 50 megawatts or 100 megawatts, we wouldn't have, have to worry about these Wartzilla engines and whether we're gonna put them on renewable gas or hydrogen or use traditional natural gas." They didn't say, "Go jump in a lake," but they indicated that their, their dance card is full, their transmission lines are full, not only full, but oversubscribed in many areas. That's the problem. And building additional transmission? And building additional transmission, believe me, I think the Sierra Club probably would have a thing or two to say about cutting through our natural forests, through our Angeles National Forest, and through the rest of it, because to build transmission, you've got to clear it out, you've got to, you know what they are, they're those huge transmission towers that you see where the lines come in. We are going to be moving towards technology advancements. One area that we don't talk about too often, that we haven't really discussed, is the advancement in emissions control technology. That technology will increase, just like the solar technology, just like all these other technologies that we've been talking about, the storage technology, et cetera. This is something that we can look forward to. There may come a time where an internal combustion engine with the proper emissions controls releases very little, if any, emissions. That time is not here now, but there's no reason that we should exclude that from our considerations, and that's exactly what we're doing. We are going to be moving toward our goal of becoming completely renewable, completely reliable, and completely affordable, because that's our obligation. As a city council, we have to make sure that the power is reliable, that it's safe, that it's clean, and affordable. That's what we're tasked with doing. There is no magic bullet to make this happen, it takes a lot of different areas to work on to succeed in that. Is electrical load going to increase? I think it is. You know, Berkeley, as I alluded to before, passed that resolution that there's going to be no new residential gas lines permitted, it's going to be all-electric, and electric power is not as, I want to use the word dense, but it's not as energetic as gas. And you, perhaps, those of you that have seen cooking on gas versus induction, or heating, gas versus electric, can see that there is a difference there. I think that's going to make our demand go up quite a bit. Anyway, to quote Winston Churchill, "This is not the end. It is not even the beginning of the end, but it is perhaps the end of the beginning in our quest for a Integrated Resource Plan that's going to provide the city of Glendale with clean, safe, renewable power for the decades to come." Yes?
I just wanted to make a quick point about the unions. I actually serve on the State Apprenticeship Council, which is a state board that is a conduit and the arbitrator of different apprenticeship programs throughout the state of California, where, by the way, literally, there are more apprenticeship programs in the state of California than the rest of the country, that's how big it is. And the unions, including some of the ones that spoke tonight, are totally involved in alternative energy types of training, et cetera, so it's not like they're sticking their head in the sand, they're moving along with the rest of the economy. As a matter of fact, we have a meeting tomorrow morning in San Diego.
Mr. Agajanian?
I would like to move under 8A, 1 through 9. I had some comments, I don't know, to do it separately or together?
With the additional direction, can we take that?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, members of council, if the item is to move all nine items, what I would suggest is, based on the desire, at least a couple of council members, to add some conditions to those, to have a separate motion stating that in connection with the items 1 through 9, the GOEP will be directed to do as follows, and those items will be, we should probably summarize them, so we're all clear on what they are, but for GOEP to take action on the additional steps that council's asking as part of this evening's item.
Second?
So you want, you need?
So who shall summarize those comments?
I'm happy to do so.
I think we have, Mr. Agajanian put them down in writing, can he give them to you to summarize?
Sure. And then if I could, I'll try also summarize Councilmember Devine's comments as well. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the items that we had as conditions to the nine action items would include that GOEP must request council authorization prior to the purchase and installation of gas units, which was in line with what Councilmember Devine stated, and must present to council any newer improved technologies that develop from now until such time that may further reduce the need for gas generation. Number two, if gas engines are installed, the use of gas engines will occur or shall occur during situations such as peak weather or adverse system conditions. Number three, that the GOEP shall report on gas usage if they are installed at the Repower Grayson Power Plant, shall prepare reports that shall be made available on a regular basis. The fourth one was that as part of the annual power content label reporting process, GOEP shall report back to the city council regarding the IRP, which will include any and all developments in DER, renewable energy, clean energy, and transmission, to identify the city's progress in meeting its SB 100 goals. And the fifth condition from Councilmember Agajanian was that GOEP shall update the council on addressing Glendale's transmission and reliability challenges in order to achieve the goals of SB 100. With respect to Councilmember Devine, what I heard was, again, not to repeat it, but it was to have the council, that the city will not purchase or install the gas units or the ICE units prior to council approval, and we couldn't do that as a matter of law anyway. And then the other condition, which was really four conditions in one, was, I think what I heard, Councilmember Devine, was within 30 to 60 days prior to the council considering the purchase of the ICE units, that GOEP will look at the following issues, will look at additional DERs, will look at how the city can get additional transmission capacity to serve the city's needs, and in helping the city reach its renewable goals as soon as feasible. The GOEP report on options to renegotiate agreements with LADWP regarding its reserve requirements, and I think that was also stated by Councilmember Agajanian, in so much as he talked about options related to reliability, so I'm not sure if the council is specific on which, whether it's more precise or a little bit broader. The fourth condition would be, or the fourth requirement of the suggested report by Councilmember Devine would be options to reduce or eliminate the need for the five units with newer improved technology, prior to council taking action on the ICE units. And then fifth, as part of that report, would be to develop a plan for goals or methods to bring back, to achieve 100% renewable by 2030. I think that's what?
Yes, and a correction, it wouldn't be 30 days, it would give them at least 60 days, no less than 60 days.
Thirty, 60 days prior to, prior to the report, coming back to you? Okay. So those are the items that?
Is that your motion then?
Yes. Second, let me just clarify, I think what we heard was clean resources by 2030, because there's clean and there's renewable, so we'd ask that that be put in as part of the motion.
Second?
So that's my motion.
I'll second your motion.
Friendly amendment from Councilmember Agajanian, and second by Councilmember Carpetian.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Do we have any cards?
12 is oral communications, we have no cards.
And? Do we have new business? Hey, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.